Okay, the audio is on.
Perfect.
All right, good evening and welcome to the July 22nd meeting of the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Commission. I'm David Carter, Chair of the Commission, and before we get started, I'd like to ask our Master of Ceremonies Kyle Kobe to give us some ground rules for tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. My name's Kyle Kobe. I'll be facilitating the Zoom video portion of the meeting. With me here is Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. We will work alongside the Chair, who is on remote video, to facilitate the meeting proceedings. Currently, I have everyone muted so we can talk through the general ground rules for tonight's meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and public access cable Channel 25. During the meeting, please mute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon found in the lower left-hand corner of the Zoom menu next to the video icon. When you are muted, a red line will appear over the icon. This will make it easier for everyone to hear the meeting. Just remember to unmute if and when you want to speak. In the menu, you can also turn your camera on or off by clicking the video icon located next to the microphone icon. For the purposes of this public meeting, please keep your video on for the duration. If you are participating by phone, you can enter *6 to mute and unmute your phone. Somewhere on your Zoom screen, you will also see a choice to toggle between Speaker and Gallery View. Speaker View shows the active speaker. Gallery View tiles all of the meeting participants. Be aware that we will not be screen sharing as a part of the meeting this evening. All attachments, reference materials, and submissions from the public are included in the Agenda packet. A few reminders to ensure the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act are met. Commissioners, you must state your name and title each time you speak. Members of city staff must also state their name and title each time they speak. I would also ask that applicants and members of the public identify themselves each time before they speak to ensure that everyone is able to follow along. Individuals who signed up in advance to provide public comments remotely will be called upon by name. When you are called on, please unmute your listening device and state your name before speaking. The Chair will then call for in-person public comment for those who are physically present. Staff will direct you to the podium to speak while following social distancing and safety protocols. All motions will need to be stated clearly. After a motion is made and seconded, staff will call on each Commissioner individually to provide their vote. Staff will then announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. I want to again remind everyone to please mute yourself when you are not speaking. Now I'll turn the meeting back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Kyle. So, under General Business, you know, we already met on Monday, we've got to revisit some issues. Jeff, could I ask, have we received any written communications from the public that we have not already received with today's update to the packet?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, all portions of it were part of your packet.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Any written communications from staff, other planning commissioners, or other commissioners?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, no additional communications.
Okay, thank you. David Carter, Chair. Any written action or any waiver requests or determinations made by the city engineer?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, no additional communications or determinations by the city engineer this evening.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair. I'm going to turn it over to the Commissioners. Are there any ex parte communications to disclose? Commissioner Willie.
Chair and Willie, Planning Commissioner, I have quite a few, so bear with me. On item number seven, temporary shelters, I spoke with Brad Finkelthei, Vice Mayor of Lawrence. I spoke with Jan Blocker of the Red Cross, Gillian Rodriek, and by email with Robert Vianecchi of Emergency Management, just to make sure that there were no other additions or other discussion items we needed to have along with the text amendment for temporary shelters, and they were fine with what's presented. On items number one and two, I spoke with Joanna Robinson, who is my niece by marriage. I ran this by Randy to make sure that there was not a conflict with this. She is the daughter of the applicant and the nearest neighbor, Rich Wakeman, and most of what we spoke of, or all of what we spoke of, is contained in the communication from Richard Wakeman in our packet. I also spoke with Jennifer Delisle of the Kansas Biological Survey and Jan Schubert-Ehrich, speaking as herself and not as her role with the Historic Conservation Council, and both of them were expressing an interest in how the prairies are preserved in the project. I heard briefly from Dennis Scauffer, a neighbor for item one and two, and his wife, Mary, has an item of communication in our packet, and that information is there. And I spoke with David Wolfkuhl, who is the trustee of Kenwaka Township, about the condition of the roads, and I can get to his comments when we get to that also.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Any other ex parte communications to disclose? Okay, and any abstentions from specific agenda items? All right, seeing none. Can open to general public comment for items not already on the agenda. We don't have anyone who's signed up in advance for a general public comment. Kyle, can you tell me if there is anyone in the commission chambers?
Kyle Kobe with planning, there is somebody here. He is planning on speaking on a specific agenda item later, though.
Very good. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. With that, let's turn it to our first regular agenda item. So, we've got two items I believe we'll treat as one. Is that correct, Jeff?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director, certainly, we would advise it's the same item. We would take them up as one. It would require separate motions for each item.
Understood. David Carter, Chair. So, these two items are, first, consider approving a preliminary plat for Kenwaka Prairie Estate subdivision, a 10-lot residential subdivision on approximately 69.6 acres in the northwest corner of North 1500 and East 800 roads. The second item is a requestary zone, the same parcel, or same bit of land, from Ag 1 to CP or clustered preservation. And I believe Mary is going to present this evening.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Mary Miller, City-County Planner. And if it's all right, I'd like to go ahead and discuss the zoning first because it has a lot of background for the plats. And there was a staff memo in your packet today. It dealt with an error I made on review criteria number 10. When I looked over my staff report, I did not have the correct information in that review criteria. So, I added that in the staff memo. And I'll go through the staff report. When I get to review criteria number 10, which was the suitability of the property for agricultural land, I'll discuss it from the memo. This item is a rezoning request from the Ag 1 Agricultural to the CP Cluster Preservation District. The rezoning is being requested to allow land division to the plating process. And a preliminary plat, as we mentioned, is present tonight, or is also for the commission tonight. The property contains approximately 69.6 acres and is located in the northwest corner of the intersection of East 800 and North 1500 roads. It is within the Lawrence Urban Growth Area. And the property itself contains an area of till farmland, approximately 33 acres. And maybe on the east side, and on the west side, it has native prairie and wooded stream corridor with wetland. So, rezoning requests are reviewed with the criteria listed in the zoning regulations, which include the golden factors. And one of the first we looked at is the zoning and land use of the surrounding area. Page three of the staff report contains the graphics for the zoning and land use. The subject property is currently zoned Ag 1 and is located within an area that is owned Ag 1 and Ag 2. CP zoning, the cluster preservation, is located to the west in a platted rural subdivision, which was platted prior to 2006. Plating has not been permitted between 2006 and 2020. Several of the nearby Ag 2 zoned properties have higher density than is permitted in the Ag 2 district. That is, they have smaller lots that would be permitted, or they would have more than two residences per 20 acres. But as they were divided prior to the revised zoning regulations and the creation of the CP district, their zoning converted to Ag 2. The small properties to the east along East 800 Road would have required CP zoning to be developed at the density they currently are. The proposed CP zoning is compatible with the existing zoning and rural residential development in the area. Per the Douglas County Appraisers Office, agriculture and residential uses are the primary uses in the area. A residential property that isn't developed and is listed as vacant is shown on the graphic as gray. With this rezoning and plating, 60% of the subject property would be developed residentially, and the remainder would be kept as open space or agriculture. This proposed land use would be compatible with the land uses in the area. Another golden factor we look at is the character of the area, and this is illustrated on page seven of the staff report. The area, and for the purpose of this review, I use a four-mile square with the property in the approximate center. So, this area contains a mix of uses. The southern portion contains a non-conforming quarry, which means it was in use prior to the adoption of the original zoning regulations in 1966 and does not have a CUP. The yellow highlighted area is owned by the US government and is part of the Clinton Park. And to the east of that is an area that is zoned for commercial uses, and this has been partly developed with a mini storage facility and both an RV storage. The remainder of the area contains a mix of agricultural and residential uses. Residences are primarily clustered in the northwest portion of the area at the East 700 and North 1550 road intersection, south on East 700 Road near the quarry, and in the intersection of North 1500 and East 800 roads. Residences are scattered elsewhere in the area. The rezoning would permit the development of 60% of the site with residences, 10 lots of approximately 3 acres. This would increase the density in the area but would be compatible with other development in the area. Clustering the residential uses provides for efficiencies of utilities, road maintenance, and other infrastructure. Another of the golden factors is evaluating the suitability of property for the uses to which it is restricted with the current zoning. The Ag 1 district and the CP district both permit a narrow range of uses, with the uses in the CP district being more limited. The Ag 1 district permits more conditional uses when approved with a conditional use permit. So, the rezoning would not permit a wider range of uses but would allow development at a higher density. In Ag 1, the maximum density allowed is one dwelling unit per 20 acres. The next district is the Ag 2 district. This permits two dwelling units per 20 acres. And the CP district allows the development of 60% of a site into parcels as small as three acres, which equates to a maximum of four dwelling units for 20 acres. The western portion of the site contains environmentally sensitive lands in the form of native prairie, wooded stream corridor, and wetland, and is not well-suited for agricultural uses but has been maintained as open space. The remainder of the property is well-suited for the uses which are permitted in both the Ag 1 and CP districts. And these uses are agriculture, hobby farm, detached dwelling, group home limited, home occupations, type 1. A type 2 is permitted in both, but it requires a CUP in the CP district, and a daycare home. The property is well-suited for uses permitted in both the Ag 1 and CP district. Another factor we consider is the potential detrimental effect the rezoning could have on nearby properties. As I mentioned, the uses in the two districts are very similar, with fewer uses being possible in the CP district. The difference with the CP zoning is that residential uses at a greater density would be possible. With Ag 1 zoning, three residences would be possible on the property. With CP zoning, it is possible the property could be developed with 10 residences. The additional residences in this location would provide more clustering of residential land uses and allow the utilities, road maintenance, and other infrastructure to benefit with the efficiencies obtained with clustered development. Some of the public communications we received were concerned with the impact of the additional traffic on North 1500 and East 800 roads. The Township trustee indicated the amount of traffic generated by these residences was not expected to impact the road, and they have plans to improve the road and the intersection in the next year or two. A new criteria that was added with our revised zoning regulations is the impact the rezoning could have on environmentally sensitive lands, and these are illustrated on page three of the staff report. Environmentally sensitive lands are defined in two locations. The subregs define them as regulatory floodway, regulatory floodway fringe, wetland, stream corridor, native prairie that is voluntarily listed for protection, prime farmland, stand-in mature trees, and archeologic or historic sites. The blue area in Figure 2C is a 100-foot-wide stream corridor marked along the stream to the property. Figure 2A shows the wetlands as identified by the US Fish and Wildlife Service. 2B shows in green the area NRCS identifies as prime farmland, and the green area in 2E shows areas identified by the Kansas Biological Survey as native prairie. The applicant has voluntarily listed the prairie for protection with this project. Plan 2040 lists the following as environmentally sensitive lands: rare plant and animal habitat, flood plain, high-quality ag soils, that being Class 1 and 2, native prairies, native woodlands, urban tree canopy, wetlands, stream corridors, and steep slopes. And the Kansas Biological Survey... ...on the property. There are no soils identified as Class 1 or 2 on the property. And although this is a rather outdated identifying system that NRCS no longer utilizes, our GIS mapping still has the information since it is mentioned in the comprehensive plan, and there are no steep slopes on the property. Environmentally sensitive lands include the stream corridor, the stand-in mature trees, the wetland, the native prairie, and the prime farmland. Protection would be provided with the plating of the property if the property is rezoned. Dividing the land would require the environmentally sensitive lands that are to be protected to be included within a temporary set-aside agreement and located within the future development area as much as possible. The temporary set-aside agreement was based loosely on conservation easement language and notes the uses and activities that are permitted and those that are prohibited. Development or damage to the environmentally sensitive lands is prohibited. The native prairie was recently added as a environmentally sensitive land, and this would be our first temporary set-aside agreement for that. And so, the Kansas Biological Survey has agreed to help us rewrite the language to include provisions specifically tailored for native prairie. And this agreement is required with the final plat, so we would be developing that as we work through the final plat. The temporary set-aside agreement remains in effect for two years following annexation into the city. This allows the city or other interested parties time to acquire the land for parkland or for future protection. If the land is not acquired or protected within that timeframe, the agreement expires and the property can be developed, as allowed by code. The rezoning would make land division to a plat possible, and the temporary set-aside agreement and the location in the future development area, and the future development area is an area that cannot be developed until the property is annexed into a city, would serve to protect environmentally sensitive lands that are designated to be protected, and a minimum of 40% of the site must be placed within the future development area. Another criteria we look at is the suitability of the property for the agricultural use, and this is review criteria number 10 and is noted in the staff memo. And planning and zoning and code staff are working with NRCS staff to develop a set of metrics to help us evaluate the suitability of property for agricultural uses. And we are working through the metrics manually through these early rezoning requests in order to gain an understanding of the various metrics before establishing a LISA or other land evaluation system for Douglas County. NRCS recommends the use of the NCCPI, or the National Commodity Crop Production Index, as a metric. They feel this is a more accurate measure than the soil maps. We still look at soil maps, but the NRCS and Department of Agriculture websites provide disclaimers on their soil maps indicating that they are considered accurate at large scales but inaccurate on the scales at which we use them, parcel scales. And as I mentioned earlier, there were errors with the soil map and the incorrect NCCPI map was included in the staff report. And I apologize for that error. These are corrected in the memo. And based on the soils map, approximately 57.4% of the site contains prime soils. And as I noted, the Commodity Crop Production Index is recommended as one of the more accurate metrics. And as we work through the evaluation system, we would like to add metrics regarding environmentally sensitive lands that could interfere with farming, such as prairies or stream corridors, and also topographical constraints, such as steep slopes or other features. And we would like to add these into our final evaluation system. And we will work on that after we've gone through these few rezonings manually. The NCCPI graphic shows the National Commodity Crop Production Index levels for the subject property, with 100 being the highest productivity level. About 6% of the site is ranked high for ag productivity, but this is located within the environmentally sensitive areas. Most of the site is scored between 46 and 49 on the productivity index. From the information that we have at this time, it appears that the property is suitable for agricultural purposes but of average productivity. We look at the time that the property has been vacant and zoned. The property has never been developed, but it has always been used as farmland and open space since the adoption of the zoning regulations in 1966. We look at compliance with the area plan. The proposed residential use is in compliance with the future land use recommendations in the west of K-10 plan. And another factor we look at is what would be the benefit to the public health, safety, and welfare by the denial of the application. Rezoning and plating would result in protection of the native prairie area as well as the stream corridor and wetlands. Also, as the additional residences would be located in an area that is already developed with residences, the intersection of North 1500 and East 800 roads, rezoning would result in additional clustering, providing efficiencies of operations for the Rural Water District, road maintenance, utilities, et cetera. No gain to the public health, safety, or welfare has been identified with the denial of the zoning request. And then we always look at the conformance of the comprehensive plan. This is discussed on pages four and five of the staff report. Plan 2040 recommends that we preserve and protect natural surface streams and rivers, wetlands, native prairies. It also recommends protecting contiguous amounts of agricultural land in rural areas for continued productive future use. This proposal would protect the features mentioned in the comp plan. Agricultural land would not be protected, but the comp plan identifies the rural area as the area outside the urban growth area. The comp plan also recommends that we conserve the visual distinction between rural and rural areas. This subdivision would add additional residences to an existing cluster of residences. The large lots and the protected open space would provide a rural or non-urban nature to the development. It recommends that we seek conservation or identify sensitive lands that define Douglas County rural character. This rezoning and accompanying plat would protect an area of native prairie along with a wooded stream corridor and wetland. These features are important features for Douglas County's rural character. And it recommends we minimize agricultural land conversion to other non-ag uses. As mentioned earlier, SAP is working to develop a land evaluation system to help us rank agricultural lands. Lands within the urban growth area would be considered more suitable for development, and those within closer proximity to the city limits would also be ranked higher for development. And these are some metrics we would want to include in that land evaluation system. And Plan 2040 recommends that we require residential development in Tier 3 to cluster, maximizing open space and to plan for future incorporation into Lawrence beyond the plan's time horizon. The accompanying preliminary plat shows the clustering of the residential development, and sheet two of the plat shows the build-out plan, which plans for future street and block layout. The proposed rezoning and land division is in conformance with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. We received several public communications, and these are included in your packet. Many of the comments are related to the additional traffic and the adjacent roads, and so staff forwarded the comments to the Township trustee, and they replied that they do not have the ability to maintain asphalt roads, but that the heavy rains of the past few years have caused issues with the roads, as with other roads in the township, and it's their plan to widen those narrowed portions in the road shortly. And as I mentioned earlier, they would be improving the road in the next year or two. Other comments are related to maintaining the rural character of the area. Clustering the residences at the intersection where other residences have already been developed would increase the development of the area but would be of a similar character. Some of the comments encourage the preservation of the native grassland and the use of a clustered development, which would occur with the plating of the property. Staff recommends forwarding this rezoning request to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based on the findings, a fact listed in the staff report, and also with the staff memo. And so, I'll move on and discuss the preliminary plat, which is associated with the rezoning application. Prior to 2020 zoning regulations being adopted, this land division would have just occurred as a certificate of survey. The revised regulations require this rezoning and also require plating if more than four lots are to be created. With a plat, it makes it possible to dedicate a local road to serve the individual lots. The plat shows 10 residential lots with access to a new interior road and two tracks, the future development areas. The future development area on the west contains environmentally sensitive lands. The future development area on the east is setting aside an area for office-related development, as recommended in the long-range plan. The Fire District approved a plat, given the proximity of the Water District tower. The Township indicated that the new road would be acceptable and they would be able to maintain it. The subregs require roads in the urban growth area to be built to city standards. However, this is the standard we may need to look over and determine if that is compliant with the recommendations in Plan 2040. However, this is the standard we may need to look over and determine if that is compliant with the recommendations in Plan 2040. But the applicant has requested a variance in this requirement, and the variance will be back to the planning commission at their August meeting. And this would be more closely related to the final plat. It would not have an impact on whether or not the preliminary plat is true. The future build-out plan shows the breakdown of the property into urban-sized blocks and shows the location of future streets. The building envelopes on the lots were designed to exclude the future right-of-way and twenty-five-foot setback from these streets, so that houses when located will still be appropriate. The location will be appropriate when the property is annexed into the city and developed to urban standards. The city engineer indicated that the street layout was acceptable, but noted that when the property is annexed into the city, the access to North fifteen hundred road may need to be removed, and the access to the residential lots taken from the collector road to the east, East eight hundred road, and there are future streets shown that would provide that access at that time. The plat complies with the subdivision standards. The northern lots in block B show building envelopes which avoid the trees in the area. It's necessary to have three acres available for the sanitary sewer system. So one condition applied to the plat is that these building envelopes be extended to the property line. The trees can be preserved if desired, but the land will then be available if needed for a septic system. And the condition has an error as the lots in question are in block B rather than A, as noted in the condition. Another condition is that the future development area or tracks be re-labeled. There were some labeling errors on those. And so staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the conditions noted in the staff report, with a revised condition number one to correct the block to block B. And of course, the final plating of the property is contingent upon the rezoning of the property to the CP district. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is present.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. We have three people signed up to speak on behalf of the applicant. Because we've got two items with a budget of ten minutes per item, we have a maximum of twenty minutes to speak. And I can leave it up to you how you want to divide this up. We've got Mary Wakeman, Ben Kramer, and Randy Sly. Ms. Wakeman, would you like to speak first? Do you want to designate somebody else to speak on your behalf? All right, you're on mute.
Okay. I'd be happy to speak first, if that's okay.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the Planning Commission, Mary Miller. I appreciate your time here this evening. My name is Mary Wakeman, property owner on record. And I am here tonight desiring the Planning Commission's consideration and approval for both the preliminary plat of Canwaka Prairie Estates, as well as the rezoning request for this acreage also addressed here this evening. As owner of this acreage, I am appreciative. This property has been a part of my given Johanning family's name. The Johannings have been a very prominent figure in Douglas County for well over a century. As a fourth-generation descendant of Douglas County and a third generation of Canwaka Township, I am also a former resident of over sixty years to both the city of Lawrence and Douglas County. I have observed an ever-increasing change to the development of this area the past forty-five years. I have seen Lawrence and the city boundaries movement toward the urban boundaries of Douglas County. As cited on the city's website, the Horizon Comprehensive Plan was introduced back in nineteen ninety-one, where Lawrence and unincorporated Douglas County began the process of creating a plan, Horizon 2020. At that time, Lawrence was home to over just shy of sixty-five thousand people, and the city comprised only about five percent of the county's overall land. In two thousand thirteen, the population took a dramatic doubled in geographic size, and as both Lawrence and Douglas County progressed into the future, challenges had evolved to meet the needs of the residents. And like myself, those needs were ones that I believe my family of origin could not have ever anticipated that Lawrence would meet the boundaries of this property. So as Lawrence and Douglas County build a firm foundation with the Horizon 2020 plan, the comprehensive Horizon 2040 plan became a reality. A plan with established goals promoting a high quality of life in both the urban and rural setting and shows direction to growth in a manner that preserves and enhances the heritage, the spirit of the community, and creating unique places to live, work, learn, and play. I believe if my father knew that what has evolved now, seeing the city of Lawrence reaching the boundaries of this acreage, neither he nor his family, which settled in the township back in nineteen twenty-seven, would want this property preserved as both its native prairie setting, as well as also having expectations to seeing a portion of this property to benefit the promoting quality and accommodate the urban growth of Douglas County and the city. I ask for your considerations for my proposal to create this subdivision to be named and dedicated as a legacy to the Johanning families, naming it Canwaka Prairie Estates as an honor and remembrance of the Johanning family's past, present, and future generations. As time evolves further, the total acreage shows a true direction to growth as an attraction that preserves and enhances the heritage while keeping the spirit of the community to create these unique places for our future residents. I have done extensive research, attended several public meetings on the comprehensive plans outlined in both Horizon 2020 and now their Horizon 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The preliminary area plan was designed based on those provisions and foundations represented in the 2040 plan as it is today. As noted in the key points of the report as presented, I believe this plan sustains the following criteria. The location is within the planning boundaries of the west K-ten plans. The property contains environmentally sensitive lands that could potentially be set aside for preservation use under the future development area. And the property conforms to the future land use recommendations located within tier three of the city's urban growth area of the Horizon 2040 Comprehensive Plan. During the process for submitting this application, several comments were provided and noted by the Planning and Development Services Department as guidance to meeting the criteria for this preliminary plat. Because of these comments, I also met with various constituents within the county, obtaining their comments to the proposal, and found no opposition to the build-out plans of this development. I have also been in consultation with both legal and financial representatives for their review of the plan, both of which have supported favorably to the planning staff's report recommendations as presented. Other contacts were made with both Douglas County Public Works, Canwaka Township in regards to the additional proposed road, E seven seven nine, shown in the preliminary plat, allowing access to North fifteen hundred road. I fully understand that the current road conditions may not show this plan to be favorable at this time, and I also realize that the given traffic might be of a hindrance. But it is my understanding through the staff's reports and findings, North fifteen hundred road's current road conditions would have no impact and conform with the criteria to allow access of the proposed E seven seven nine road. With possible upgrades being researched by the county as noted, once the actual construction of the subdivision commences with this development, the township and county engineers showed no concerns allowing E seven seven road to access North fifteen hundred as presented. As the total of my property does equal sixty-nine point six acres and is currently zoned AG1, the proposal for the rezoning request from AG1 to cluster preservation is a key factor to this plan and will accommodate the preservation of the native prairie in this proposal. The criteria for the CP was designated to designate forty percent of the total acreage as future development area or the FDA. Noting this and realizing that the west side of my property contains native with restored prairie that may show a historic factor, it also has the stream corridor, wetland areas, and the desire excuse me, mature trees throughout this portion of the property. Designating this area as sensitive to remain as FDA, a temporary set-aside agreement, as Mary Miller stated, also is noted and a part of the plan that will preserve, protect this prairie from future development. I have been in contact with the Kansas Biological Survey to briefly discuss these options once the preliminary meets the Planning Commission's approval. My plans are to further engage with KBS and other entities to further identify the historic aspects of this prairie and identify a strategy that will offer protection options for this sensitive area. Along with the expertise guidance from the Planning and Development Department staff to the skills and knowledge from Kramer Consulting Group, the preliminary plat for Canwaka Prairie Estates has been drafted and is in accordance with the Horizon Comprehensive 2040 plan as it is today. Canwaka Prairie State has also been reviewed under the subdivision regulations for Lawrence and unincorporated Douglas County as published and meets the criterion of that as well. I truly believe Canwaka Prairie Estates meets favorably to the needs of both Lawrence and Douglas County, plus it offers other potential for future preservation for our future generations. If this meets with the Planning Commission's approval and as it moves toward final plat, these ten lots, when accessible and ready, will be available in accordance to the covenants and restrictions that will be a part of the Canwaka Prairie Estates and adhere to those regulations. I would like to thank the Planning Commission for their time here this evening as you review the credentials presented. If it meets with the Commission's approval, I would now like to introduce Ben Kramer of Kramer Consulting for any additional comments he may have on the project. Mr. Kramer and his group has worked very extensively on meeting the guidelines of developing this plat for your consideration and approval. After his comments, Mr. Kramer and I would be happy to address any questions or concerns that the Planning Commission's may have or public comments that would need answered. I have also asked that my associate Randy Sly be permitted to make comments if needed for any of the questions that may be addressed here this evening. Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, Commissioner. I'd like to first thank Mary Miller for all her help in developing this plat and rezoning. I think that Mary Wakeman has done everything that she can to comply with the regulations of the county and the city and meet all the plan requirements. And one thing I'd like to mention, too, is that the staff recommendations, I think Mary is in full agreeance that those things, she would agree to those two items. So is there any questions of me or that I can help answer at this time?
I'm sure there very well may be. Thanks. David Carter, Chair. If that concludes the applicant's comments at this point, then we can move to the public comment. I have three people signed up for comment. Richard Wakeman is first. Is Mr. Wakeman here? Kyle, do you have Mr. Wakeman on the call?
Kyle, could be with planning. I have a couple of phone numbers. I'm not sure who those folks are. I don't see anybody with that name.
Okay. If we don't have Mr. Wakeman identify himself, at this point, we can try to figure out if those phone numbers might be associated. I can move on to Patrick Curtis. Is Patrick Curtis on the call?
Thank you. My name is Patrick Curtis. This is my wife, Martha Kaufman. We appreciate the work of Mary Miller and the Commission and for you allowing us to have some input on this. We were unable to get a written response earlier, and so we do appreciate the opportunity to give our input.
And forgive me, Mr. Curtis, before you begin, I should have mentioned a public comment is limited to three minutes per comment. So please observe.
Okay. My wife Martha and I have lived at eight oh three North fifteen hundred road. That's on the southeast corner of the intersection of East eight hundred and North fifteen hundred. We've lived there for nearly thirty years now, and we see the traffic grow, especially since the advent of the overpass, the K-ten bypass. The township does an admirable job of keeping our roads in good shape, but the traffic has become a burden already on the maintenance. To add to it, this development seems unwise. You would have to do major improvements to all your roads. And I'm not just talking about a little widening and a chip and seal. That takes a lot of maintenance afterwards also. While our six and a half acres where we live is not a farm operation, we're part of a family-owned operation in southern Douglas County that has been in operation for almost one hundred and fifty years. If this same proposal were to happen in our immediate area, we too would see it as an impingement to our operation. Already, the intersection where we live, there's a farm machinery and commercial traffic. We live in a farm community. Allowing this development will disrupt that community. Both my wife and I grew up in areas where farm interests and developments were often at odds. We know that we can't stop an inevitable change, but we think it can be done with wisdom and prudence. Now, we don't see this development to be, at this time, wise for the county or the township. In addition, the meetings my wife and I attended in the past year on the proposal of change for the county zoning regulations seem to have at its heart the intent to maintain continuity in the rural agricultural community, along with create a development and expansion where deemed worthy in not taxing the ability to maintain infrastructure. This proposal seems to be contrary to both at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. The next person on the list is Julie, and I'll try to pronounce the name correctly. Is it Lynn Teecum? You're on mute.
It's Lynn Teecum.
Lynn Teecum, forgive me. You have three minutes as well.
Thank you. Members of the Douglas County Planning Commission, my name's Julie Lynn Teecum, and I strongly oppose the items that are being discussed, and I urge you to vote no. I'd like to briefly touch on a few important points concerning this area. First, as has been stated, fifteen hundred road is already overrun with traffic, and specifically the intersection at fifteen hundred road and eight hundred road. It's always in need of constant repair. If the road were to have that much more additional daily traffic of a subdivision, let alone the additional number of the large equipment and trucks coming in and out during construction, I don't see how the road would stand up to it all. I urge you to take a drive down the road to see for yourself. Additionally, the rural water district did say that they stated they can handle the additional number of meters, et cetera. But our water pressure isn't anything too strong, and I'd be curious to see what the plan is to get sufficient water resources provided without doing anything existing to the neighbors' waters. Third, the plat layout that's been provided does nothing to maintain the aesthetics of the land. Within the area shown on the proposed plan, it looks like they just picked up a street Within the area shown on the proposed plan, it looks like they just picked up a street in Lawrence City limits and plopped it down in the country. I'd like to be able to see the covenants and what's expected by the homeowners in means of planting trees and to maintain as much green space as possible so that it still feels like they live in the country. If the above is indeed denied, it's still possible to rezone that sixty-nine acres into three twenty-acre parcels, and that would be much more suitable for the area. Lastly, I'm going to include a quote that is in the applicant's response, and I don't exactly remember what page it is or anything, but it does say, the quote is, "It is believed that the value of the property can be sustained over time if its uses are restricted to the current zoning. So, the value of the property can be sustained over time if left in the current zoning state. Therefore, no hardships would be endured by the landowner. This area of our county has been mainly farmland and large individually-owned acreages for decades. That's why we moved where we did. I know you've got about five letters in your packet that were similar to what I just stated, and so I highly recommend and encourage you to please vote no on these two items. Thanks for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Lynn Teakum. Let's see. Kyle, can you verify whether Mr. Wakeman has identified himself?
Kyle Coby with Planning. I, I am not seeing that name or any of the participants, I guess, statuses changing. Statuses, statai.
All right. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. How about, you mentioned there was someone in the commission chamber. Are they there to comment on this item?
Kyle Coby with Planning, they are not. The gentleman that is here to speak is here to speak on item number four.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. David Carter, Chair. With that, Ms. Wakeman, would you, if you'd like to respond to the public comment, you have five minutes to do so.
Thank you, Mary Wakeman. I would only like to thank all the public comments and written, both written and verbal. I don't have any further comments, but I would like to let Ben, Mr. Kramer, speak on behalf of some of the comments if he wishes to. And I would like to further thank both Mary Miller, the commission, for all your time spent on this. And I would just ask Mr. Kramer for his comments to the public. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, this is Ben Kramer. I just want to just refer back to the staff recommendations, the professionals who have looked at the roads and who have commented on the roads, that they're going to be widened and improved, and that would be their, you know, that's the recommendation of them, and I think we rely on those, on the professionals in that respect. That's really all that I've got. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the commission and open it up for questions or comments to the, to staff or the applicant. Any commissioners want to start? Commissioner Ashworth?
Wrong button. Yes, just to get this started, just speaking to an issue that I believe the second member of the public commented on, I won't try to pronounce her last name. In terms of the development that would be allowed if it were to be maintained as Ag-1, can Mary Miller speak to what kinds of protections might be available for the prairie ground and if it was developed as allowed under Ag-1?
Well, under Ag-1, you could divide it into twenty-acre parcels or larger, just through a survey, and build a house on it. So, the only time we would get any protection is if someone wanted to divide off a smaller parcel for the house. Say they wanted five acres, if they had twenty, they could divide off five acres for the house and do an agricultural natural resource protection agreement for the remainder, which states that it won't be developed. So, there aren't any specific protection standards, but there is a, if you did divide it off to have a smaller parcel with a home, the remainder of that twenty acres would have to be protected, that it could not be developed.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm sorry, Mary Miller Planner, I gotta remember that.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Ashworth, that answers your question? Very good. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Sinclair?
Commissioner Luke Sinclair, do we have any other examples of these temporary set aside agreements, either in, I guess, maybe in the county? Mary?
Yes, we've used them since 2006. They're required with all certificates of survey in the urban growth area, since we didn't do plating. And so, when someone had lands that were designated for protection, they sign these agreements. They're also signed by the city manager and by the county commission chair, and so it outlines what they're allowed to do. Occasionally, we've had people, if they had stands and mature trees and they wanted to put in a gazebo or a trail, they would add that into the language, so that would be permitted. But it specifically states what they can and cannot do. It also states that it's not public property, you know, crowds just aren't going to start encroaching on the property. They still have private property rights. Now, we don't have any that have been written with native prairies, because that was just added, and so we're going to ask a biological survey to help us establish some guidelines for the protection of that.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner, if I could have a follow-up, Mr. Chair. What's the rate on whether these temporary set aside agreements are actually, I don't know what the right word is, fulfilled, or if someone actually comes along, the city or otherwise, and exercises the option to just buy those or take, take ownership and set them aside, I guess, in perpetuity or something?
We have not annexed any certificates of survey yet. We did have one northwest of town, just a little bit north here, and they did a temporary set aside agreement, and they wanted it protected in perpetuity, so they contacted the Parks and Recreation Department to see if they were interested in purchasing it, even before it was annexed. And so, that would probably be the route we would take with this, is the first person to contact is Parks and Recreation. If they're interested in it, you know, they probably want to work with the property owner early, and if not, you know, we would wait until it was annexed. We have not annexed any properties with temporary set aside agreements yet.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, just going to follow up on Commissioner Sinclair's question. The language in the preliminary plat report is basically creates an option for the city or county to purchase this land for two years after annex. So, I guess my hypothetical is the city and county both lack the resources to purchase that land within the two years, when that may or may not happen in the future, and as the staff report says, it would open it up to develop. I mean, what would happen to the native prairie and mature standing trees if land is annexed and neither the city or county have the finances available to purchase park land at that time?
Right. And a lot of ti, I'm sorry, Mary Miller, city-county planner, a lot of times, you don't actually have to purchase it, because when land annexes, usually someone has a development proposal for that property. They want to subdivide it into urban blocks, and the city has the ability to work out a deal. For instance, they could offer to put in the sidewalks in exchange for that open space. So, they don't always have to out and out purchase it, or someone may, a developer may offer to dedicate that, you know, in exchange for some other provision. So, it's not always, you don't have to purchase it necessarily. You know, some of the parkland in the city has been dedicated in exchange for the city putting in sidewalks. And so, it's, it is an expense, but it's not a monetary exchange. So, if, if they came in and no one in the city took the measures to protect it, no one else took the measures to protect it, then yes, it would revert. You still could not protect, you know, you could, there's nothing, just the wetlands would be the only thing that would be protected. We're doing a stream corridor ordinance, so hopefully that would be protected. Right now, we don't have anything in our development code that would prohibit developing a native prairie, so the goal would be that this development would continue following annexation, but there's no guarantee.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. What Mary just described is exactly the community benefit process that's mentioned in Plan 2040 as part of the annexation, which I hope we can get to putting into code here sooner rather than later. But it also raises the issue to me about these lot sizes, the build-to-city standards. If we have too many of these out there in tier three, especially how close this is to tier two, I mean, the infrastructure already passes Highway 40 on the west. This is the only place it reaches the SLT around town that I'm aware of, but these lot sizes really prohibit the type of neighborhood development that we have in town. They're actually going to be a barrier out there, which raises another couple of issues, which there's talk about covenants, so what would that do to some of the policies that are being put forward by the city for affordable housing, once we hit this, these large three, four-acre lots and want to bring them into the city? What hidden impact to the purchasers of these properties in the future, where there has to be a area, I just spaced the word. It's like the Queens Road Project, which they, everybody got taxed to pay for upgrade of their road based on the square footage of their property. These people are going to get hit with huge costs to upgrade North 1500 Road, should be annexed. And, you know, but on the flip side, we're probably not going to see annexation take place out there until we have the resources to build at least two fire stations. So, you know, I don't know what, what exactly is going to happen, and those are the types of issues that I hope we bring up when we revisit all the area plans that encircle the city, because we may want to have some way to permit subdivision of these properties or allow smaller lots if we see them on the immediate horizon coming into the city. The city's moving west. That's the, that's where the infrastructure is. That's always been a stated preference of the city commissions for several years now, so we know we're going this way. So, there's a lot of issues we want to bring up. I do note, this time, we're not being asked to amend an area plan. We're not being asked to amend Plan 2040, which I'm happy with, because I would have to oppose it just because of our past decisions, if we were being asked to do that tonight without further discussion about the whole area. So, there are parts of this that I appreciate. I certainly appreciate the, trying to attempt to protect the native prairie and the woodlands and the stream corridor, and I hope we get good input from the biological survey sooner rather than later, so we can get some of these provisions put in place. It's kind of, I hope those end up both at the city and county level, being put in place. So, there are lots of, it's just very many questions in my head about what we're looking for, for long, long-term development, going out, pushing the city when it's out, which, if you look at the map on page seven of the staff report with the growth tiers, we're not very far from this problem. So, I doubt that we probably, we may very well push out towards here before the next Plan 2060 comes along. So, I'm hoping we have some of these discussions sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, did you want to say something?
I'll piggyback, Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, and I'll piggyback some on what Commissioner Carpenter said. First, I talked about the rural zoning regulations that changed not that long ago. They did, they helped us get to this point. So, one thing, this would have happened without any kind of public process not that long ago. So, the fact that the neighbors know and get a chance to weigh in and to hear from them, that's, that's a big new change, and I'm glad to see that happen, that we've needed that. The other part of it is that it gives us the cluster preservation as an option, because we've struggled with, we haven't had any tools whatsoever to preserve native prairies and sensitive lands, and they've come to us, and this cluster preservation, it offers us that. It offers us a way to protect, or at least, you know, save for a while this forty percent so that we can kind of get our act together and decide if parts are wrecked or any county open space plan could be developed in time to, to take that, that native prairie land over. So, that's given us a couple of tools, but as Commissioner Carpenter said, we have not had the full discussion about what development between the city and county should look like. We've had half of a discussion. So, there's been a lot more that needs to happen that not going to, we won't be able to get to or solve tonight. We still have to make a decision on this property and this project, but how, how close to town we want to have, you know, rural neighborhoods is something that, you know, the city of Lawrence needs to be in on that discussion in a deeper way, and, you know, what's, what's the best way to develop in this tier three. But in the meantime, we'll have to decide this project on the merits that we have ahead of us, knowing that those conversations still have to happen, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Other commissioners with questions or, or comments for staff, for the applicant? I don't know if we're at a stage where someone would like to make a motion. I guess I'll, I'll just say, my, my observation is, I'm, I'm torn. I, I respect the points of view that have been brought up by the neighbors. You know, it's a, it's an ex-urban environment. You know, this, this development would, would upset that balance, but with respect to the observations of both Commissioner Carpenter and Commissioner Willie have made, this is a, this is an area that's surrounded by other similar densities, and it is, you know, within the urban growth area, very close to the tier-two areas. It's, it's served by infrastructure, and so I am inclined to favor it. I think also that clustered preservation is, is an innovative way to preserve the native prairie, which would not be guaranteed if it retained its, its existing zoning. So, would, would other commissioners like to make, make other observations, or would anyone like to make a motion on either of the, on, I guess, a point of order for, for Jeff, do we need to make these, these motions in the order presented in the, in the packet? Or do we do, doesn't zoning typically, you know, presage the plat?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner is correct. Typically, you're right, the zoning would kind of set the stage for the preliminary plat. It could be taken in either order this evening, but I, I would recommend the zoning first before the plat.
Thank you very much. David Carter, Chair. Other commissioners have any observations or questions or motions? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. We talked about traffic, which somewhat, which came up in public comment, both in the written and in the, and people who came to speak tonight, and I did double back and check with the Canawaka Township trustee about that they felt the roads, though not in super shape, because we've had two really terrible years for road maintenance, can be brought up to see where the additional ten lots were not any more problematic than an additional three lots would be if they were, if it were to stay in Ag-1. We haven't talked about, because this is part of that bigger discussion, but one of the other points that was brought up in the packet was the, the number of available building lots in the county or nearby to this property. That's one of those bigger picture discussions that I think we need to have, and we need to have Kanye Voight from our zoning codes in that discussion also, for how many lots are out there and how many do we need to have before we add more. I don't think that's probably going to be something we can get to tonight, but I think it's, it's worth noting that we haven't, that we're not necessarily approving this because there's a need for, for developable lots, but because it's a project that has other merits in terms of being able to preserve the prairies that's there and other things. So, I just, I just put that observation... So I just put that observation out there. And just to keep in mind that the choices here is not development or no development. It's the cluster preservation with 10 lots that preserves the prairie, which is something that we have asked for and wanted, or the development of three lots, which we have, which gives us no protection whatsoever. So that's the choice that we're looking at in my mind.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Other observations? Commissioner Sands?
Rob Sands, Commissioner. Commissioner Willie, would you restate the last thing you just said? I was preoccupied with my map and I did not catch the whole statement, please.
And I can, this is Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner, I can pitch this back to Ms. Wakeman to verify it, or to Ms. Mary Miller. The property, the proposal we're looking at now is 10 lots clustered and the 40% of the acreage is preserved for the native prairie. The option without any other public process or any other, any other preservation or anything like that, is that Ms. Wakeman could subdivide the property into three buildable lots at the moment. Am I saying that correctly, either Ms. Wakeman or Karen Miller?
Mary Miller, that's right. You could do three lots under the current zoning with no protection.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Sinclair, were you wishing to say something? You were just scratching your head. Okay, very good. Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. And Mary, I guess this is for you too, the set aside of the prairie and the stream bed and such, that essentially, the areas, I guess you said it was 40%. That's what, everything that we've got here is what's in Plan 2040 to protect the lands. And it would actually get additional protections or we'd require that community benefit at the time when it was annexed into the city, which would be the same area to protect. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand you. Are you saying is that 40% future development area, would that be the portion we could ask for as a community benefit?
Well, Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner, yes, I guess it's sort of along those lines. I'm just asking that if this was an annexation, what percentage of the property would be required to be set aside or protected under the current code or hopeful code?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. I'll try to answer that one to my best of my abilities. We don't have the policies in place yet, but as part of that community benefit process, that would be one of those negotiating steps that would be put out there for an item. There's not a percentage or a parameter set around it at this point in time, but it could be that the possibility that those future set aside areas are part of that larger discussion that occurs with an annexation. So there's not a specific number or amount that is part of that. That would be an item that would be brought to the city commission for their consideration and deliberation.
David Carter, Chair. Other questions? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. When we've had developers come through with other projects, we always ask if they have had a chance to reach out to the neighbors and have discussions. This is a new process for us in terms of the rezoning from either Add One to Add Two or Add One to the cluster preservation. I think that would be an appropriate kind of habit for us to start with that, is to also ask the applicant if there's been any outreach to the neighbors. Since we're hearing from the neighbors, have they had these discussions amongst themselves or is this the first time that they're having those? So I'd like to ask, Ms. Wakeman, have you spoken with any of the neighbors that either you're hearing from tonight or that you've reached out to in other ways?
Yes, Mary Wakeman here. I believe I understand your question, Commissioner. We have had meetings with constituents throughout the area. There are favorable ones as opposed to the negative ones that you're hearing here this evening. So, and addressing it with both the county and township, I think we've had numerous meetings. Mr. Kramer can also probably enlighten us on the discussions he's had across the township if he cares to make comment.
Mr. Kramer, would you care to make any comment in response to Commissioner Willie's question?
Ben Kramer, Kramer Consulting. Our discussions have been basically with the entities, the department, the road and bridge department, and working through staff with Mary Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Commissioner Willie, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie, do you have any follow-up questions or comments?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I guess I'd like to ask that if it's possible for the neighbors to exchange phone numbers or some other way, it doesn't have to be in a public setting, so that if it comes to a construction, that there's a way other than going through a public process for neighbors to express concerns or have concerns addressed. It seems like we've done that with more formal development kinds of projects in the past.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Other commissioners wish to say anything? I think the positions have been fairly clearly articulated here. I don't know if anyone is prepared to make a motion or do we feel like more points of view need to be articulated here? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I really don't want to make a motion. I have people on both sides of this and didn't get out of being able to make a vote on this because it wasn't a close enough connection, but that I would treat it without bias. I just want to speak to rural neighborhoods and how they feel to us and how our open space feels to us, that it does feel like a loss, even when it's not your land, it's part of your viewscape, and it's part of what we drive by, and it's part of why we enjoy living where we live. And it's hard to see that, hard to see that lost. And so I really feel for the neighbors that came out and the ones that wrote public comment also in why they don't want to see this happen. I also see the merits in the project of being able to preserve this prairie especially because we haven't been able to do that in the past, and this is our first chance at it. And I know we've mentioned tonight, or it's been mentioned by other commissioners, that this is similar to development in the area. And though that's true, it also doesn't feel that way if you are an established person living in that neighborhood. The additional density, you do feel that. And so I'm still on the fence, but I just want to speak to that, that there is a real loss that's felt even by people who don't own the property when that neighborhood does change.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Other points of view? Commissioner Struckoff?
Eric Struckoff, Planning Commissioner. I appreciate the last comment Commissioner Willie made about the loss that is sensed by people who've gotten used to and cherish the open spaces they have out there. My concerns along those lines are mainly ameliorated by the improvements that are impending along the road. And as Commissioner Willie also pointed out, the protections that are given under this cluster preservation. And I think that to me is, I'm inclined to support this because I think that's a good idea. I think that sort of oversight is beneficial in this case. I also appreciate Commissioner Carpenter's clarification of what happens at the end of that two-year period after annexation. And I think that was a helpful reply by Mary Miller on what possibilities could occur for the city and/or county after that. So thank you for those. I'm inclined to support the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. David Carter, Chair. Would that support lend itself to a motion? Commissioner Ashworth?
What I take to heart, Commissioner Ashworth, I take to heart Commissioner Willie's comments and the comments of the neighbors that are living out in these rural neighborhoods. I am inclined to support this because of the protections that are offered to the sensitive lands. And so I can entertain, I can go ahead and make a motion if we are ready.
I believe there's always room for more discussion, so please feel free to make a motion if you're so inclined.
Commissioner Ashworth, I move that we recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 69.6 acres from Add One to Cluster Preservation District based on the findings presented in the staff report and forwarding it to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. We have a second. Commissioner Struckoff, by a hand motion. Second. Any further discussion? Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Certainly. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes, that was.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Of course, we have the second item, that's the act of the preliminary plat. Do commissioners have any further questions, comments, discussion on that item or would anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Sinclair?
I'm happy to make a motion if you'll take it, Mr. Chair.
Please feel free.
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I move that we rec, or I'm sorry, I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Kenwaka Prairie Estate subdivision based on the findings listed in the body of the staff report and subject to the conditions itemized with the one change that it should be Block B in condition number one.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Do we have a second? Commissioner Struckoff, by a hand motion? Any further discussion by commissioners? Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. That brings us to item number three. Consider approving a request to rezone approximately 0.33 acres from RM12 and RS5 to CS, our commercial strip district at 532 Michigan Street. I think Luke is here to present on that. Luke, you're on mute.
Good evening, Commissioner. Sorry about that. If you give me just one second, I need to get everything set up here.
Took you by surprise.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. Like I just mentioned, my name is Luke Mortensen, planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. Item number six on tonight's regular agenda is a, oh, excuse me, I am sorry. I had everything ready to go.
Have item number three?
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, here we go. I'm sorry. Item number three on tonight's regular agenda is request to rezone approximately 0.33 acres from RM12, which is our multi-dwelling residential district, and RS5, a single dwelling residential district, to CS, our commercial strip district, for a property address as 532 Michigan Street. The application was submitted by Dean Grove on behalf of the LMH Board of Trustees, which is the property owner of record. The subject property is located north of the intersection of West Sixth Street and Michigan Street. The parcel is directly north of the former Anderson Rentals building, and it's composed of two platted lots. However, only the western lot, which is zoned RM12, has frontage along Michigan Street. The eastern lot, which is zoned RS5, has no frontage along any right of way. The request to rezone is the result of the proposed redevelopment of the former Anderson Rentals building as a proposed healthcare clinic, healthcare office use, which requires the area of the subject property for accessory parking. At the time of dismissal, Section 20-535 of the Land Development Code restricted the location and size of accessory parking uses when not located on primary uses property. The applicant proposed CS district in order to match the existing zoning district of the proposed Heartland Community Health property. The proposed parking area will be site planned along with all other proposed redevelopment activity at the Heartland site. Site plans are administratively reviewed and approved. Staff reviewed the proposed rezoning against a number of criteria, including the golden factors. The request is in line with previous rezonings in the immediate area and conforms to the standards and goals for expansion of the CS district in the Land Development Code, Plan 2040, and the HOP district plan, which is the approved small area plan for this portion of the West Sixth Street corridor. For these reasons and the reasons noted in the staff report, staff recommends the planning commission forward to the city commission a recommendation to approve the proposed rezoning from RM12 and RS5 districts to CS district for the parcel addressed as 532 Michigan Street. Dean Grove, the applicant, is here tonight, and of course, he stands for questions. And I apologize again for not having everything at the ready.
No worries. Thank you, Luke. David Carter, Chair. Mr. Grove, would you care to respond, or to make comments?
Yes, Dean Grove with Grove Engineering. I think Luke did a good job with staff report. It's great when they explain it so well that I don't have much to say. Some of you may remember that the adjacent property came up a couple of years ago, and some of the comments in that planning commission meeting were, well, why aren't we in it? Or why aren't we rezoning this particular property? So here it is. I think Luke's done a good job. The main reason is Heartland Healthcare is working with the Lord's Memorial Hospital to kind of make a great project here. And with that, gain a little parking and then ultimately provide an access for LMH to their facility at Sixth and Main. So it's ultimately going to serve several purposes, but I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. I'm sure we'll have some questions. Regarding public comment, we don't have anyone signed up in advance. And, sorry, David Carter, Chair. Kyle, could I ask you if there's anyone here to speak on this particular item?
Kyle Coby with Planning. There's nobody here to speak on this item.
Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission for their questions and comments. Or motions? Commissioner Willie?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. This seems like a really straightforward use that helps the Heartland Healthcare Clinic move forward. I'd be totally in favor of it, and if I could pull up the right place, I'd make a motion, but if somebody else can get there first, so much the better.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Yeah, I agree with your judgment. I mean, this seems like an impossibly narrow strip to be used for its zoned purpose, and its adjacency to this development seems like a natural fit. So I'm inclined to support it as well. Any other commissioners have any questions, comments, or wish to make any motions? Commissioner Butler?
I move that we recommend approval of the request to rezone approximately 0.33 acres from RS5 district to RM12 district and RM12 district to CS district based on the findings of the based on the findings of the fact presented in the staff report and forward to the City Commission with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Butler. David Carter, Chair. Do I have a second? Commissioner Payden? By hand motion. Any further discussion? And Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. That brings us to item four. Consider approving a special use permit to allow a second detached dwelling on one lot in RS 5 District at 1445 Prairie Avenue. And I believe Becky is here to give a presentation on that.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Becky Pepper, and I'm a planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. The application for you, your consideration tonight, is for a second detached dwelling use that would be located on a residential lot. The subject property is located northwest corner of East 10th Street and Prairie Avenue in the Brook Creek neighborhood. The property is owned by tenants-to-homeowners and is developed with one detached dwelling that fronts on East 15th Street. The intent of the special use permit request is to provide two permanently affordable houses on the property. The property is zoned RS 5, and so the process that would permit a second detached dwelling use on the lot is through approval of a special use permit. A site plan's been included in your packet that shows the location of the existing detached dwelling as well as the location of the proposed detached dwelling. An existing residence is a two-story structure that is only 893 square feet. And then the second detached dwelling would be located to the north of that existing residential structure and would front on Prairie Avenue. The proposed detached dwelling would be a one-story structure and would be approximately 105 square feet. The property is located in RS 5 zoning district that surrounds it to the east, north, and west. It's adjacent to RS 7 District to the south. And as such, the property is primarily surrounded by detached dwelling. Section 20 508 of the Land Development Code provides eight specific land use standards at the RS 5 District. Two of those codes provided in the staff report is the first special use permit being brought to you for the purposes of detached dwelling use on such a lot. I want briefly summarize those requirements in the review outcomes. First, the code requires that agreements are completed to maintain the detached dwelling permanently affordable. Agreements the existing house, proposed house, have at both parties, and it is a condition of the special use permit if the agreements would be fully executed prior to issuance of a building permit. Second, the code requires that no more than two dwelling units shall be located on one lot. And the application complies with that standard because if approved, the special use permit would allow only a total of two lot houses on the lot. Third, the density and dimensional standards of Article 6 must be met, and the minimum lot area for each dwelling unit must be at least 3,000 square feet. The density and dimensional standards include such items as minimum lot area setbacks and impervious surface requirements. The minimum lot area required in the RS 5 District is 5,000 square feet. The subject property is approximately 7,150 square feet, which does exceed the minimum lot area requirement. And it also meets the specific use standard requirement that there be a minimum lot area of 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The required setbacks are also shown on the provided site plan, and the two detached dwellings would meet those setback requirements. One thing I wanted to note is that the site plan proposes a detached dwelling that would be located in a rear setback approximately 1.2 feet from the north property line, which is adjacent to an undeveloped alley. The proposed carport would comply with provisions of the Land Development Code, however, because the code does provide an exception to setbacks for accessory structures when they're adjacent to an alley. The maximum impervious surface permitted in the RS 5 District is 75%. If the special use permit is approved and the property is developed with two detached dwellings, the total impervious surface would be 42%. Going back to the specific use standards, the fourth one requires that the parking standards of Article 9 are met. Two off-street parking spaces are required for the detached dwelling use. And the proposed site plan shows that each detached dwelling would have two parking spaces associated with their driveways and carports. In addition, the driveways would comply with the width, surfacing, and location requirements of Article 9. The fifth standard states that lots do not, that do not comply with the minimum lot area requirements are ineligible. As I previously mentioned, this becomes one platted lot that exceeds the lot area requirements of this property. So this property is eligible for a second detached dwelling. Six, each detached dwelling must be served by separate utilities. And there is existing infrastructure located in the street and the alley right-of-way that would serve each detached dwelling separately. The seventh code standard requires that each dwelling unit have direct access to public right-of-way. Access to both detached dwellings would be provided by two separate drives from Prairie Avenue, which is classified as a local roadway. And finally, the last standard requires that the permanently affordable agreements be recorded with the Douglas County Register of Beads prior to issuance of a building permit. As I previously discussed, the agreements have been drafted and approved, and the building permits would not be released until the agreements have been fully executed and recorded. So in addition to the compliance with the provisions of the Land Development Code, the special use permit review criteria also includes items such as the compatibility of the proposed land use and its effect on adjacent uses and properties. The primary land use in the area is detached dwelling use. And as such, the proposed detached dwelling is consistent with the land uses in the area. Also, the size scale, the size and scale of the proposed structure is similar to the other residences in the area. And with the entrance of the proposed dwelling unit proposed to face Prairie Avenue, it would help maintain the pattern and the character of the neighborhood. Another review criteria is whether the use will cause significant impacts on the natural environment. The subject property is not located within the regulatory floodplain, and it does not contain sensitive lands. In addition, the total impervious coverage would be 42%, which is well under the maximum impervious coverage permitted in the RS 5 District, which is 75%. The full evaluation of the approval criteria and the findings of fact are provided in the staff report. And that evaluation showed that the proposed second detached dwelling use meets all the requirements of the Land Development Code and that it will not adversely impact adjacent uses or neighboring properties, and it will not significantly harm the natural environment. As such, staff recommends approval of a second detached dwelling on one residential lot in the RS 5 District and forwarding the request to the City Commission with a recommendation for approval, subject to the condition that prior to issuance of a building permit, agreements to permanently restrict each detached dwelling to affordable dwelling units will be fully executed and recorded with the Douglas County Register of Beads. And the applicant is here tonight. If you have questions, then of course, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. I think both Mr. Grove and Rebecca Buford are here. Mr. Grove is listed first. Would you like to make any comments following up on Becky's presentation?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Carter. Dean Grove with Grove Engineering. I don't have much to add. Becky, again, did a great job. I prepared the document, so I will be happy to try and answer any questions in terms of the document itself. And then I'll turn to Rebecca to answer questions in terms of affordability and documents that tenants-to-homeowners require on these projects. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, David Carter, Chair. Just to clarify, Ms. Buford doesn't have any particular comments at this time. I'll be on mute.
There we go. Rebecca Buford, Executive Director of Tenants-to-Homeowners. And my comments are simply that we have been talking about this a long time. And we're really excited to use this special use permit. We have met with the neighborhood many times. We have addressed some of their concerns. For example, only building three houses on two lots and leaving, you know, the other half of the second lot in this location for green space and garden space. We are only at 42% impervious coverage. So, you know, we've heard from the neighborhood they're worried about drainage and all of these things. But, you know, I would argue we don't seem to be on the edge of concerns for that. We have, we built two houses on, you know, two separate lots right there already that have been sold to buyers in trust, a couple and a single person. So again, they're not giant families moving into these smaller houses. And the need is really great for smaller, single-family ownership. I'm proud to say two women of color are owners with those two houses. And so in a moment when we're talking about equity, I think it's really hard not to talk about this work of ours. And the other thing you'll hear from the neighborhood is that they are for affordable housing and for equity ownership, but not in their neighborhood. And I would like to say I agree completely that we need to get affordable housing to the west side of town and to every neighborhood. And I have plans to do just that. However, before we had this tool, we had already purchased this lot. And I have been applying for funds to purchase lots on the west side. Given the COVID crisis, a lot of funding has been diverted to immediate responses. And the need for housing is at a crisis right now. So the idea that we don't use this tool once on the first lot that we already own and don't require additional money to spend for an affordable unit is a little much to ask for a nonprofit who is truly trying to complete their mission. These are small houses. They meet the reasonable density. And they will serve, this is a single-story house that will serve a senior. It will be fully accessible little unit for a single person. So I have yet to hear from the neighbors what our housing has actually done to hurt their neighborhood or values in their neighborhood. It's brand-new construction. So I urge you to understand how important this kind of housing is and know that we have every intention to take this tool now that we have it and buy lots throughout different neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. David Carter, Chair. We have three people lined up for public comment. And I believe, Kyle, you said we've got a person on site as well. I'd like to begin with folks who signed up in advance. Do we have Chad Harper on the call here? Mr. Harper, you have three minutes. Pardon me.
Chad Harper here. In support of the Tenants-to-Homeowners program. We live on the, the house on 13, 16 East 15th, which is basically next door to 1445. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the program. I don't really have a ton of stuff to say. I just, I'm here to support. And if there is any questions about, you know, the lot and, and, you know, I guess I just am here to support. That's all. If there are any questions, I would answer them.
Very good. Forgive me. Thank you, Mr. Harper. David Carter, Chair. We also have Raven Harper. Is Ms. Harper there as well?
Yeah, I'm the other half. Yeah, like my husband said, we moved in in March during the pandemic. And we have been really grateful to have had this program. Otherwise, we would not be homeowners right now. We've lived in Lawrence since 2003 and have rented various places in town. And we're just really happy to have this new place. And, yeah. And also, when we first started our journey on acquiring this property, we were told in advance that there was going to be a third property on this lot. So it wasn't a surprise or anything for us. And, yeah. So also, yeah, questions are welcome if anyone had them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. David Carter, Chair. We also have Malachi Edison. Mr. Edison, if you would care to speak, you've got three minutes.
Yeah. I guess I'm just here as someone who, I've owned a tenants-to-homeowners home for five years now. And we love it. My family has grown and we take care of the home. I know early on when we went to meetings about these homes, people were concerned about if people would take care of the homes, if they would lower the, I guess, the property values of the neighborhood. And, you know, I actually, just this last weekend, my family and I drove back past the two new homes that are there in the empty lot next door. And they're beautiful. I mean, it's a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. And it would be exciting that this is a new home that could be available for the elderly on a single level. I don't really know that I understand any concern. They have pretty large yards. It looks really nice. It doesn't look any, what's funny is it doesn't look any different than the rest of the neighborhood, except for that it's newer and nicer. And so I think from my perspective, there seems to be a lot of fear or that, you know, we're oversaturated in an area. And I think the design work that went into these homes is actually a lot better than what could have ended up there and has already been there in the past.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edison. David Carter, Chair. Kyle, I believe there is somebody in the chamber to speak on this item. Is that correct?
Kyle Coby with Planning. That is correct.
So if I could just ask you to state your name so we can, if we have questions, we know who we're addressing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, hi. I'm Bob Rumel.
I live right directly next to the, the new developments. I kind of wrote something, so I'm just going to read it. On, on this report, it says welcoming neighborhoods, and this is factually not true. The residents of Brook Creek neighborhood do not welcome tenants-to-homeowners. Firstly, I had submitted to the public record a petition signed by almost a hundred Brook Creek neighborhoods against the text amendment allowing tenants-to-homeowners to double-density their low-income housing in this neighborhood. Secondly, I have submitted to this public record that there is an uneven distribution of low-income housing in Brook Creek from tenants-to-homeowners, with Brook Creek getting the lion's share, even with its inadequate infrastructure, as, as I'll point out with the below variance, while West Lawrence, with all its adequate infrastructure, has zero low-income housing. This is NIMBYism at the city level, and the city needs to stop funding tenants-to-homeowners until there is equitable distribution among the other, the other neighborhoods. Thirdly, as a direct neighbor to the north of this property, I have expressed my disagreement to Jeremy and Rebecca Buford when they bought the property and to the Brook Creek Neighborhood Association about their rumored intent to build their four-house complex. In particular, I disagree with their need to turn the current treed and undeveloped city land to the north into an alley for the sole benefit of providing personal driveways to their four-house complex, which would also put traffic three and a half feet from my bedroom and further advance this garden-centric neighborhood into one that is treeless and tarmac. Already, the alley across the street to the east is solely acting as a personal driveways for their existing treeless fifteen-plus rental unit complex. The current sequence of events on this fourteen forty-five Prairie property has been to develop a house on each R two, I'm sorry, on each of the two RS five lots. And then number two, to get the city to pass a text amendment to allow two houses on a single RS five lot. And then three, ahead of this adding of houses, extra houses on the lot, to get the city to pass a large variance of thirty-two feet and ten feet against the city's public street minimum right-of-way. And then number four, replating the property to support the four houses. And today, to get the city to permit a third house on the property. And then tomorrow, get the city to permit the fourth house on the property. And then seven, convert, convert the undeveloped city land to the north into the fourth house personal driveway. I ask the planning commission to listen to the neighborhood and its residents and decide against doubling down on this already unfair and uneven distribution and not permit this third house.
Thank you, Mr. Rumel. That concludes the public comment. Mr. Grobe and Ms. Buford, you have five minutes to respond.
We have had extensive conversations with the neighbor, Bob Rumel, and throughout these two years have said we have no intention of developing the alley, we have no intention of removing the fruit trees, we have no intention of building a fourth house, and that has been continually told, so I'm not sure, I'm frustrated that we're even talking about that. We are applying for three, the third house on two lots, and that will be it. Because we agree the green space is a, is a better use, and we are, are all about creating good neighborhoods. We don't have the funds to develop the alley, and there's no point to the alley because the third house can have access off of Prairie. And without, with us not having any interest in building a fourth house, there's no reason to develop the alley. So we have told Mr. Rumel this again and again, and a little frustrated that it keeps coming up. Please know that we have no interest or intention of, of doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. Does that conclude your, your response at this point? Yes, okay. With that, I'll turn this back over to the, to the commission, who would like to start with questions or comments to staff or the applicants. Commissioner Butler.
Thank you. I will get started. I, I would like to thank Ms. Buford. I, I do think that you have a great program. I am grateful that the Harpers and Mr. Edison came to speak with us today. I appreciate you guys and your time. We have heard from Mr. Rumel before, and I am glad that he gets to come out and express his opinion as well, but I do think this is a worthwhile project. I am fully in support of it. I, I get disappointed when we have, people come and express kind of the, I, I like to refer to it as, I guess, Mr. Rumel does, you know, not in my backyard. We have a lot of hard-working people in this community, and I think anytime anyone has the opportunity to own a home and invest like that, it's, it benefits, it's beneficial to the entire community. So you have my support, and I thank you for, for coming before us today.
Thank you, Commissioner Butler. David Carter, Chair. Other questions, comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Ashworth? Commissioner Ashworth?
Commissioner Ashworth, I just want to say I've walked through that section of Brook Creek, walked around there and have seen the new houses, and I'm very impressed with those houses. They look wonderful. They fit the site. I, I'm excited to hear that even from the inside, the residents who have come here tonight have really enjoyed that property. I find them very attractive and would welcome any of those houses in my own neighborhood, which is also art, artis five.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Sands, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, Rob Sands, Plank Commissioner, thank you. I, I have one quick question for staff and then a statement. I don't know if the data is available, but Mary covered that there was going to be a forty-two percent impervious surface on the lot. What is it currently with just the one structure? Or, sorry, Becky, I think it was, sorry, Becky.
Hi, it's Becky Pepper with the Planning Department. Do you give me just what I get? I can grab that off of the, the site plan. I think that's math I can do.
An approximation is fine.
And Dean, if you have that information readily available, please feel free to chime in also.
Yes, Becky, thank you. Dean Grobe with Grove Engineering. On the site plan, under the development summary, under property surfacing, the existing condition would be with just the one house is sixteen point four percent. The building coverage is about twelve point five. So, yes, it's increasing, but, you know, I think, as several said, anytime you're under fifty percent of impervious coverage on a, a lot, you know, you've got a lot of green space, you know, contributing to that lot. But it is on that site plan under the development summary table.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm, I'm very happy that tenants-to-homeowners in this environment, in not only in the COVID-19 environment, but in, in the current housing environment that we're seeing in Lawrence, is able to expand their operations. But Mr. Rumel's points, I don't think is lost on anyone in the commission. I think we would all like to see more affordable housing, and more affordable housing whereby tenants-to-homeowners in other areas of the city, to include West Lawrence. I don't think anyone's in disagreement with that, but perfect cannot be the enemy of good in this or many other cases. And so I support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair. Other questions or comments from commissioners? Ah, Commissioner Willie.
Hi, Willie, Planning Commissioner. Becky, can I ask for clarification? I think when we did the text amendment, we allowed this, this particular use, two houses on one lot, if they're permanently affordable, by right in most, most residential districts and only by SUP in RS five. So that's the reason that we're seeing this one, right? Is that because it's RS five?
Becky Pepper with the Planning Department. That is correct. Because this is an RS five zoning property, it requires a special use permit. If it were a different zoning example, RS seven, then it would be allowed by right and not require a special use permit.
Follow-up question, Becky and Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. And with the size of the lot being over seven thousand square feet, could it also be an RS seven lot? It's, it's the same size as what would qualify for RS seven. Is that right, Becky?
Becky Pepper with the Planning Department. That, that is correct. The, the RS seven zoning district requires a minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet. This particular property has a lot that is seven thousand, approximately seven thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. So in theory, it could be, have a zoning, it would comply with at least the minimum lot size requirement of the RS seven zoning district. I haven't looked to see what, if it were to comply with other standards like the lot width or frontage requirements, but it would comply with the minimum lot period requirement of the RS seven district.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Carpenter, did you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I had the good fortune to be out there during the Battle of the Builders when the first two structures were begun. This property and this, pretty much close to the site plan was posted on the board out there, and Ms. Buford walked through exactly what this was going to be. This is no surprise. The double density, this is, these are the lots that were, the ones that were discussed as the examples for double density. I would point out that the variance on the street width is to bring it in compliance with other portions of Fifteen Street, and that only benefits the neighborhood by making street narrower and harder for the city to widen it in the future, which those on Nineteenth Street are very happy to have narrower streets that are hard to widen by the city. The houses out there, they've got, lack of better words, good bones. I mean, I saw the, how they were put up. They're sturdy houses. Can't speak to the exterior. I didn't see what that was or what the fixtures are, but the, the actual initial construction, very sturdy. I think they're very good houses. I know there's some other people on that street. There are two other houses that owners are renovating, and there's a lot happening in Brook Creek. I'm very familiar with Brook Creek. There are other two-story houses. This is just a one-story house here, which is compatible with the rest on the road, except for one that has two stories in the back of a, of a house. I agree that Brook Creek is getting a brunt of some of the affordable housing right now because of the lower cost. I'm glad to hear that Ms. Buford and tenants-for-homeowners are looking for funding to purchase larger lots and use out to the west, as all our discussions have been, both at Ahab and at Planning Commission. The three thousand minimum came as a protection for Brook Creek. It was originally just two on five thousand square foot for twenty-five hundred, but between those two boards and, and final approval by the city, it was the minimum requirement of three thousand, which is the smallest zoning, RS zoning permitted in the city. So everything here is in compliance with what's been discussed in the past. It meets the needs of affordable housing of the city. And like I said, these, these structures right here are basically been the poster children for all of our discussions about double density and permanent affordable housing and everything else. I'm very happy to support this here. One more point, in infrastructure, the city's doing a current survey of the infrastructure. The city's well aware of the aging infrastructure in this area, and we're, and is in the process of determining the capacities and what may or may not have to be improved. So there's a lot going on in the different departments throughout the city to meet the needs of this neighborhood, and if we can get a push for more affordable housing out to the west, I think we'll meet one of those last feelings of resentment that perhaps more is happening in this neighborhood than other places. We saw the same with, in certain neighborhoods with the short-term rental program, how it was clustered in certain neighborhoods for having a larger impact. But I think everyone's aware of that, and everyone's working hard to develop policies to, to alleviate some of these concerns. And I'm very grateful that tenant homeowners have taken those part and are working with those. So I, I will support this too.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Willie, please.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. I want to echo that, too. I appreciate the equity work. I appreciate the affordable housing work. I'm glad that we have the, the lot size in place, because I think that that does help with the drainage and all of that, especially with Brook Creek. And I would certainly welcome when we're able to get these moved out west of Iowa Street also. So, but thank you for the work. It's a great program, and I'm very much in favor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. I'd just like to observe, you know, out of fairness to Mr. Rumel, we do have a couple of additional emails, one from the president of Brook Creek Neighborhood Association, making the argument that it's time to diversify, you know, affordable housing across the city, distribute it so that it's not concentrated in, in Brook Creek. But that said, I'm, I'm also really grateful for the presence of the Harpers and Mr. Edison speaking personally from their experience about this, this program. And, yeah, I, I intend to support it as well. Any, any further questions, comments from other commissioners, or, or would anyone like to make a motion at this point? Commissioner Sands.
Mr. Chairman, Rob Sands, Plank Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of a second detached dwelling on one residential lot in RS five district located at fourteen forty-five Prairie Avenue and forward that to the city commission with a recommendation of approval, subject to the condition enumerated one.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. David Carter, Chair. We have a second. Commissioner Payden, by hand motion. Any further discussion? Jeff, may I ask you to read the role, please?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Certainly. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. We've got a long agenda this evening, and we've got four more items. At this point, I'd like to propose a recess for nine minutes to reconvene at eight forty. At this point, I'd like to propose a recess for nine minutes to reconvene at 8:40. Turn back on, we'll be able to sit back into it. Let's see. Almost there. Oh, my, uh, my gallery view is getting thinner as, as the night goes on. I think we've got, we're missing just a couple of people. All right. Oh, we, I thought we had Commissioner Sands back. Let's see. Let's get to item number five. Consider approving a request to rezone approximately 12 acres at 173 East 1250 Road from AG1 to AG2. And I believe we have Mary to give a presentation.
Yes, Commissioners, Mary Miller, City County Planner. This is another rezoning request. It's a little different than the others. This is a rezoning request for approximately 12 acres from the Ag 1 to the Ag 2 District. And prior to the adoption of the revised zoning regulations earlier this year, a homestead exemption survey was an exception from the subracks for any property within the agricultural district. And this exemption allowed residences that were on the site prior to 2006 to be divided from the remainder of the property through a survey, provided certain criteria were met and they did not have to go through a planning process or no planning approvals. With the 2020 zoning regulations and the creation of the two agricultural districts, this exemption only applies to properties zoned Ag 2 as the resulting parcel would be less than the required 20 acres. And the applicant would like to remove an existing house that was built before 2006 and 12 acres from a larger parcel and maintain that property's right to a building permit. The remaining parcel will have over 20 acres and will keep the Ag 1 zoning. And so as we look at this zoning request, we'll look at the zoning and land use. The property is bounded by a mix of Ag 1 and Ag 2 zoning, as shown on page four of the staff report. The proposed rezoning would allow the separation of the residents and the acreage from the larger parcel. The applicant indicated they wanted 12 acres rather than the minimum three acres that would have been possible if rural water were used, as they hoped to do some hobby farming for their own use. Land use in the area is shown as a mix of agricultural and residential uses. The land division and rezoning would be compatible and consistent with this pattern. To look at the character of the area, again, we took about a four-mile square, about one mile in each direction of the property. The property is located in the southwest corner of the intersection of North 200 and East 1250 Road. It's approximately one mile south of the intersection of highways 56 and 59, which is commonly referred to as the Baldwin Junction. This area is shown on page six of the staff report. The area is not within an urban growth area and has good access to the major transportation network, being adjacent to East 1250 Road, which is County Route 1045, the major collector, and just one mile south of that intersection of highways 56 and 59. The area contains a mix of Ag 2 and Ag 1 zoning. The majority of the Ag 2 zoning is located along East 1250 Road and North 100 Road, as shown in figure four of the staff report. The subject property is located within an area that is, has clustered residential development. The proposed zoning would be similar to other zoning and land uses and would be compatible with and maintain the character of the area. We look at the suitability for the uses to which is restricted, but as we've mentioned earlier, the Ag 1 and Ag 2 District basically have the same list of permitted uses. You just can have a smaller parcel in the Ag 2 District. So the property is suited to the uses permitted in both the Ag 1 and Ag 2 District. We look at the impact on environmentally sensitive lands. The features are illustrated on page 10 of the staff report. The property contains flood plain, class 2 soils within the flood plain, prime farmland in the southwestern corner of the property, and steep slopes with wetland and farmland of statewide importance in the southeastern portion of the property. The zoning and codes office would evaluate any building permit application for encroachment on the flood plains or wetlands. The proposed land division, a homestead exemption survey, is an exemption from the subracks and no planning approvals are required for this division. We also look at the suitability of the property for agricultural use. And the map on page 13 shows that National Commodity Crop Production Index ranking for the site. There is an area with a ranking between 80 and 90, but this is located in the area of the steep slopes, the flood plain and the wetlands, which is just south of the existing residence and would be in the parcel that would be divided off. A small amount in the southwest corner has a ranking between 90 and 100, and this would remain on the larger parcel, retaining the Ag 1 zoning. The area marked as A is also ranked fairly high, between 60 and 70, and this would also remain on the larger Ag 1 zoned parcel. The subject property would contain an area with between 40 and 50 ranking and the steep slope, wetland and flood plain, which has a ranking of 80 to 90. The more productive farmland would retain the Ag 1 zoning, the less productive is a subject of rezoning request. Each parcel would be suitable for agricultural production, would be parcel that is not being rezoned, having the higher productivity ranking. And staff recommends forwarding this rezoning request to the Board of County Commissioners who has a recommendation for approval, subject to the findings in the staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant, James Nye, is present as well.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair. Mr. Nye, or we also have, is Steve Leary on the call? Mr. Nye, would you care to say anything to supplement Mary's presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time. I'd just like to start by saying thank you to both Mary Miller and Tanya Vogt. Both have been very accommodating in taking many emails and phone calls over the past year as purchase of this property has developed. So I am the applicant. I don't have a specific presentation, but I do want to answer any comments or questions with regards to the application for rezoning.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Nye. We don't have anyone signed up for public comment. Kyle, could I ask you if there's anybody in the chamber?
Kyle, COE with planning, there's, there is nobody here.
Thank you, Kyle. David Carter, Chair. With that, I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Would like to ask questions or make comments to the, to staff or the applicant. Commissioner Willie.
Senator Willie, planning commissioner. This is a property that's familiar to me. I used to live right across the road before the Highway 59 was expanded there. So I just walked by this property and very familiar with it. And as far as, you know, lot splits that we're looking for, this kind of answers the things that we're looking for, you know, that the, the better crop ground and the wetlands are staying in that Ag 1. Still planning to do something with the property, possibly Ag-wise as Ag 2. I think this is something that we should allow the property owner to do. I don't see any reservations about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Other, other commissioners? If there's no, no further comment or questions, would anyone care to make a motion? Commissioner Sinclair?
I, Luke Sinclair, planning commissioner, sorry. I agree with what Commissioner Willie said and I'm happy to make a motion if no one else has anything to add. I move that we forward Z 2000163, the request for rezone approximately 12 acres from AG1 agricultural to AG2 transitional agricultural, excuse me, district to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation for approval based on the findings presented in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair, is there a second? Commissioner Willie, by hand motion. Any further discussion? Jeff, could I ask you to read the role, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, planning and development services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. With that, we're on to item number six. Consider approving a text amendment to the City of Lawrence Code, Chapter 20, permitting detached dwelling use in RM 12, RM 12D, RM 15, RM 24 zoning districts and RMO residential, oh, excuse me, multi-dwelling residential office. Let's see, and Luke, I believe you would like to give a presentation on this.
Good evening again, everybody. Luke Mortensen, planning and development services department. As Commissioner Carter just noted, and I'll go ahead and repeat them, item number six is a proposed text amendment to permit detached dwelling use by right in the RM 12, RM 12D, RM 15, RM 24 and RMO zoning districts. You previously heard and considered this item on the May 27th Planning Commission meeting alongside a separate proposed text amendment to permit the detached dwelling use by right in the RM 32 zoning district. At that meeting, the commission failed to make a recommendation on the detached dwelling use by right in the RM 32 district and deferred a recommendation on the same use in the remaining RM districts pending the City Commission's determination on the first proposed text amendment. You had also requested additional information on a number of questions related to the use in the RM 32 district. A staff memo with additional information that was also considered by the City Commission is in tonight's packet. At the July 7th City Commission meeting, the City Commission considered the detached dwelling use in the RM 32 zoning district. They approved 5-0 ordinances 9775 and 9781, with the condition that the proposed detached dwelling use in the RM 32 district obtained an administratively approved site plan. Staff will be presenting those ordinances for second and final reading at the upcoming City Commission meeting. Sash's recommendation on the item at hand, text amendment 20-00079, detached dwelling use by right in the remaining RM districts excluding RMG, remains a recommendation to approve and forward to the City Commission for final consideration. Staff believes amending the land development code to permit the detached dwelling use by right in the above listed zoning districts will not create adverse effect upon adjacent neighbors and property owners. Staff will continue to review for code standards such as setbacks, off-street parking and historic resource requirements via the building permit process rather than potential special use permit application. To conclude, staff recommends Planning Commission forward the proposed amendment to the City of Lawrence Code, Chapter 20, permitting detached dwelling use by right in the RM 12, RM 12D, RM 15, RM 24 and RMO zoning districts to the City of Lawrence Commission with a recommendation for approval. Staff initiated this proposed text amendment, so there is no applicant, excuse me, I can stand for questions, and I will add that this afternoon I had a brief email conversation with Marcy Francisco, who has been pretty involved with this, with these two text amendments, and she voiced her support for this specific text amendment, so the RM districts excluding RM 32. So she just was not able to get her comment in on time for the packet. Other than that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Luke. David Carter, Chair. Who would like to start with any questions or comments for Luke? Well, I'll just start by, by thanking Luke and staff for entertaining a public comment from the May meeting and as well as our very lengthy commission discussion that followed that. I think, given the, the changes that you've described, it's not, not hard to, not hard to approve from my point of view. I'm curious if any other commissioners have any observation? I'm curious if any other Commissioners have any observations. Commissioner Sands?
In general, I wouldn't say I necessarily have a problem with this concept of increasing uses by right in certain zoning districts. I don't believe, however, so if we're looking, if we're going to look at the goal of having, allowing by right the construction and development of different housing options in different zoning neighborhoods, then this is a good idea. If we're, if our main goal is to try to address housing affordability and improve slash increase density in the city, I don't know that this is the move in the correct direction. Understand that those things, those two can, those two concepts can be complementary, but also can be at odds at times. If we were to say that we wanted to achieve both, give, create conditions in which development can offer options in housing and increase density, we would kind of do the opposite, allow for increased density construction by right in single-family zone, zoning districts. So allowing by right duplexes, quadplexes, eightplexes in the RS districts. I halfway like this because it allows greater use by right, and I halfway don't like it because I think it's a move in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands. Any other Commissioners want to contribute to that discussion? And I don't know, Commissioner Sands, was there anything that you wanted to hear from staff with respect to those observations?
I always like hearing from staff, Rob Sands, Commissioner, I always like hearing from staff, especially when it comes to, I know we all do professional reading about zoning and where the trends are in the planning community. Staff probably does more of that than others, so maybe I would ask for their opinion on use by right in single-family, multifamily zoning and where the trends are going currently. Over.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services. I will let Jeff kind of speak to those bigger questions that you had about expanding uses by right in other zoning districts. I will just note that the property that kind of started this all, Paul Warner, or Mr. Warner's original property, 1116 Tennessee, was the first SUP for this detached dwelling use that was approved by the city commission. So obviously, we can't tell the future, but if that might give you a little bit of an idea of how prevalent this situation is.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services.
David Carter, Chair. One of the other observations that I think from, that came up in that meeting that's worth calling attention to is this, having to go through review before allowing detached dwelling. It's extremely rare, if not what unheard of, for those requests to be denied. I think from an efficiency standpoint, use by right for detached dwellings makes sense. I know that the main issues that came up in May's meeting had to do with the RM 32 district, and with those being, you know, not included in this provision, I think that it makes sense to me. And I, but I am sensitive to Commissioner Sands' observations about affordable housing as well. But I think with the, with the traditional use of these to establish single-family residences and to promote rehabilitation and restoration of converted single-family homes that had been apartments, I think this is something that makes sense to me.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Just to kind of add to Luke's comment earlier and just kind of, I guess, share a little bit of our insight to this one, the staff looked at this as more of a way of activating lots that may not be activated under their current zoning district. And a lot of the old zoning codes in the City of Lawrence, you had, I always call it like a piling of uses. So in the 1927, 1935, and 1949 zoning codes in Lawrence, you had use groups that began with, you know, the first group was always a detached dwelling, and then it would be a detached dwelling and some additional uses. And then the third one would be detached dwelling, the uses from the second, and the uses from the third. So you saw a progressively adding of uses going up, but they always were rooted in a detached dwelling as being kind of that beginning point for the development pattern of Lawrence. The one thing that the development code has always kind of treated that in a very similar way, where you have your detached dwelling as your entry use in the residential zoning districts, except for certain instances, and then that's where Section 508 would come in. And we thought this would be a good opportunity to both allow the activation of lots that may not have activity because they don't have certain desirable parameters that you would see for a multi-dwelling or a higher density development, but they might be available for a larger detached dwelling, or a individual looking to take a property that it was a former boarding house or a congregate living and take it back to its detached dwelling roots. So we were just trying to find a way to open that table up a little bit more and give more opportunities for some existing structures to maybe have a new lease on life, and then also to just make a way that you can kind of activate some lots and developments that may not be quite in sync with today's land development code from other plating exercises that have occurred over the last hundred years.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Anyone want to fill some dead air time or perhaps make a motion? Does anyone have any questions, any other skepticism about this? Commissioner Willie?
Good morning, Willie, Planning Commissioner. My original skepticism was about not wanting to make sure that when we have multifamily zoning, that we don't just abolish that and come in and put in single-family housing instead and lose that amount of density, but kind of the caveat's in there about, you know, only if the majority of the houses on the block are facing, you know, facing the block are single-family, I think that gives us enough protection. I don't have any concerted concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Any other questions, observations? Let's see, Commissioner Ashworth?
I was going to make a motion, but if Commissioner Sands has another comment.
All right. Commissioner Ashworth, I think the floor is yours.
I move that we recommend that, Commissioner Ashworth, I move that the commission recommend the plant, excuse me, let me start again. I move the Planning Commission forward the proposed text amendment to the City of Lawrence Code, Chapter 20, Article 4, Use Table, and Article 5, Use Regulations Regarding Permitting By Right the Detached Dwelling Use in the RM 12, RM 12D, RM 15, RM 24, RM 32, and RMO zoning districts to the Lawrence City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. Oh, excuse me, Luke, I think, do you have?
Yeah, Planning Development Services. I think Commissioner Ashworth mistakenly added RM 32 in there. I could be wrong, but I thought I heard that.
I did. I was reading from the script here and...
Thank you. Would you like to amend your motion? I know it was already a mouthful.
Yes. Yes, I would like to amend the motion as stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. Is there a second? Commissioner Sinclair, by hand motion. Any further discussion? Jeff, could I ask you to read the role, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payden?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. That brings us to item number seven, consider approving a text amendment to Chapter 20 of the City of Lawrence Code to increase occupancy limits and/or locations related to temporary shelters. Amy, I believe you're presenting this here. Oh, there we go. Is Amy on? I see.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. I think we may have lost Amy for a moment here. Let's see if we can try. If it would be nature, I'll give it, how about I give it a try to kind of help us along for this item?
Sure, sure, please.
So Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. The item before you this evening is a text amendment to increase the occupancy limits and locations related to temporary shelters throughout the community. There's a lot of different discussion points that are going on about this, and one of the details that we noted is, and let me, excuse me, while I scroll down here, is that temporary shelters are typically located in certain use instances in the community. And one of those specifically is related as an accessory use when it is with a religious institution use that is in the code. This text amendment is to expand those, and I believe it is on page four of your packet on that portion there, to look towards increasing the occupancy limits of temporary shelters when they're accessory to the religious assembly use in the code. And you can note in there that it is to not exceed 120 days in the calendar year. It would be for a maximum of 20 people in instances of 1,500 square feet, which would include both shelter clients and staff, and instances of 3,000 square feet of space, a maximum of 40 people, which would include shelter clients and staff. And so that was kind of the way that we were looking at the details of that one. As part of the process for this, I should let you know that we have been in constant communication with our fire prevention division to understand what ramifications that has for life safety codes on that aspect. We have also been speaking with Barry Walthall, who is in Planning and Development Services with us as our building code official, to understand how that affects building code reviews from their standpoint of things. And so we've been working very closely with our life safety partners to make sure that this amendment does meet the goals of those two code sections, but also permit the expansion to kind of help alleviate some of those items. And I will say that that is probably a crash course on a text amendment, so I would be happy to answer any questions that you have related to this one. I would also like to thank Luke Mortensen, who also took a role and kind of helped get this to your plate this evening, and so that's why you see Luke as part of our call on this one. So I think between Luke and I, we should be able to help you guide through this if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Would like to begin with questions to staff about this. Commissioner Sinclair?
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. Jeff or Luke, I'm sorry if this is addressing the fact I missed it, but does this affect the special use permits that are currently in place?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. This would not, those special use permits have their approvals, they've already been adopted by the city commission, they would stay as they are. The expansion is really related to the uses that don't require the special uses through the process. This would be the ones that are the accessory uses that are tied to a permitted principal use. So this would just be, it's already a part of our code, this would just be expanding it in some shape and form for the size and the amount of individuals that the shelter would be able to accommodate.
Thank you, David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Butler?
This is Commissioner Butler. Jeff, is the number of people that are listed in the proposed amendment, is that, how is that determined? Is it like sleeping space, or how do you, how does that, how's that figure, that number?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. That was a number that we were, we kind of landed on with the help of fire prevention and our fire marshal here in the city to kind of calculate approximate square footage based upon a couple of different factors. One of those is the area sleeping requirements that are part of the FEMA requirements for when they're doing their operations, but also just to make sure that the space was available and enough for someone to spend overnight in a safe manner. As you may or may not know, any time that somebody's overnight in a structure, that is when the fire and the building codes take a different look of an element of it, and so that ability to find exits becomes vitally important. The availability of fire prevention equipment, sprinkler systems, hoses, fire extinguishers is a critical element that they start looking at. But based upon the guidance that the fire prevention team saw, and based upon the documentation that we've seen from some other FEMA documents, 75 was about, excuse me, 75 square feet was that limit to kind of round that number that we have before you this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Good morning, Willie, Planning Commissioner. So Jeff, to follow on that, the square footage, that's not the square footage of the building because if you're talking about like a religious institution, you may have a variety of spaces, but they're only limited to using a certain portion of that space for the shelter. So would it be, is it the sleeping space in particular that counts for that square footage?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, that'd be correct. It would be the space that would be used by the shelter use, not the totality of the space that is the structure itself. Exactly for that, you might have a much larger structure but only using a couple of rooms to accommodate the accessory shelter use. That is, that is the square footage we would be looking towards.
Thank you, Jeff. I think Commissioner Sands, you had something you wanted to say.
Rob Sands, Commissioner, I was going to ask the same question as Commissioner Willie, so I will ask a follow-up instead of who is going to, who ultimately determines the usable space for the temporary shelter? Is that, is that going to be the fire marshal with the religious activity, or do they do that in concert?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. They do do it in concert with our fire prevention team to kind of figure out the details to it. The part of this is that, you know, we don't issue any kind of special use permit, there's not a land use approval that comes along with it, but they do go out and make sure and kind of, for lack of a better term, kind of go and give guidance to make sure that the space is performing in the way that they hope for, and then also to kind of let people know, this is some things to kind of look for in that, kind of as a space develops there. I think Luke wants to add on to this comment, so I will cede the floor there.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services Department. I'll just add that, kind of as a staff, we were talking about this back in the winter. From the beginning, when these calls come in with, from, you know, for example, religious institution calls, the planning office, we get them in touch with our fire safety folks and get those courtesy visits started as soon as possible, and then also in touch with our plans reviewing department, who can discuss ADA and that kind of stuff with them as well. So that is, you know, on everyone's mind from the beginning.
I had a quick follow-up if I could also, probably for Luke, or it could be for any of the staff. When we say five support staff, is that five support staff in total, or is it five support staff per a quote-unquote shift? Or is that defined, or do we want to leave it? What's the word I'm looking for? Not specified.
Luke Mortensen, Planning and Development Services staff. I see that Amy is back on, and maybe she'd be able to answer this question.
Yes, Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. We had that conversation and leave it a little bit open-ended. The key here is no more than the 20 occupants total at one time, or the 40 occupants total at one time.
Very good. Commissioner Sands, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. David Carter, Chair. Other questions, observations from Commissioners? Commissioner Willie?
Got a question for Amy. We have two options kind of lined out for us. The one is to look at the square footage and base occupancy limits on that, and the other is to look at using, allowing temporary shelters, not just along with religious assembly uses, but other uses, so publicly owned buildings and such would fall under that too. Is this an either-or, or why is the, why is there not a space consideration for occupancy levels outside of religious assembly? levels outside of religious assembly?
So Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. Currently, the code allows temporary shelters to be accessory to other uses, but with a special use permit. The religious institutions are the only one that are allowed that exemption by right with certain provisions, such as that occupancy limit and the limit on the number of days. When the City Commission initiated this text amendment, they did initiate the text amendment to look at occupancy limits in addition to looking at allowing it to be accessory, allowing temporary shelters to be accessory to other uses. We have split the text amendment into two parts. You're seeing the first part tonight, and that deals with the occupancy limits. And the reason that we did that is in exploring some of the other uses, expanding the uses, we knew that that was going to take us some time to delve into and really get into it. We do plan on bringing back a text amendment that could potentially expand the number of uses that it can be accessory to, but we split it into two parts. What you're seeing tonight is the occupancy limits, and that was really out of a sense of urgency. We didn't want to hold up all of the elements, particularly because we wanted to get things going before the cold shelter weather season comes.
Commissioner Willie, have a follow-up?
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. So thank you. That, that helps me understand what we're up to tonight and what we may have coming in the future. And I did volunteer at the winter shelter last winter, and the 15-person occupancy limit was, was really problematic for trying to meet the need. We felt that the need overall, should everybody that was unhoused in cold weather come to the shelter, would have been about 45 people in the community, maybe more. And so that's, so even at the limits we're looking at, and not to say that everyone would come, but looking at the limits, we're still struggling to meet that need with a single location. Not that it has to be a single location, but just kind of putting in front of everyone that the scope of the need that is trying to be met here possibly, but that's also a pre-COVID or post-COVID model of putting people in shelter space like this. So we still have to answer these questions, but it may be a while before we get to use something like this to get in the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. I have a follow-up question for Amy about your anticipated timeline for the, you know, the second half of the equation. In other words, you know, I recognize a sense of urgency, but given the kind of health and safety situation, it seems like we've got these two things in, it's likely that they need to be in, in concert with each other. I'm curious what your anticipated timeline would be for, for expanding the uses that would be, that would be covered.
Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. I can tell you that staff is actively working on it, and there's been some active discussions on it. I can't give you an exact timeframe, but I think that we would hope to have something to you within the next month or two.
Great, thank you. David Carter, Chair. Follow-up question. With the, you know, concerns about, you know, since this is, it's, it's a response both, I think, to last winter's situation. We've got limited funding for the, for the public shelter, or the community shelter, excuse me. And I know a lot of community groups, a lot of religious institutions stepped up last year to try to help out, and as Commissioner Willie observed, you know, ran into some, some difficulties when it came to occupancy. You know, we've got this secondary concern in the COVID age with, with, you know, who's going to be accountable for maintaining standards of, of health and safety and minimizing transmission, all that sort of thing. Would it be the Public Health Department, or who's going to be holding institutions accountable for those kinds of factors? I know that's not a planning issue, but I'm curious.
Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. The Health Department is the enforcing entity with all of those local orders.
Okay, thank you. David Carter, Chair. Are there, it looks like Commissioner Carpenter, you forgot something you'd like to say?
Commissioner Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. Has the Health Department been involved at all in discussions about these proposals?
Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. I think that they have been involved tangentially, and we've, we've had a couple of discussions with them involved in the early stages when we were exploring some options.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioner Carpenter, is that, answer your question. Please, go ahead.
Commissioner Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I'm just going to, I guess, assume that the shelters are still going to be subject to what any of the public health orders are at the time that they're operating. Are they have been correct?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. If I can clarify the question, would the, would the shelters be subject to the Health Department's occupancy limits for gatherings in those items? Is that correct?
Well, gathering, masks, social distancing, the whole, the whole, everything that is coming out in order to decrease the risk of spread of that.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. To the best of my knowledge, that would be correct. I don't, I don't believe the orders have exemptions or specific specifications in that one. I've, it's been a while since I've read many of them, and I might not have them all in detail, but I believe that to be, be accurate.
Thank you. David Carter, Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Back on the fire safety, was there any discussion about, is the signage that for fire exits and things like that sufficient for sweeping quarters, or should there be any additional thought given into either training of staff or signage for, for the general public that's using that as a shelter for how to find fire exits?
Amy Miller, Planning, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. We would implore what the, what the Fire Prevention Division does the same today with the new occupancy limits. And what they do today is they actually make a courtesy visit. They make contact, make a courtesy visit, and they actually have a checklist of recommended items. And they'll go through that with the religious institution or in the entity hosting the temporary shelter. And yes, exiting signage is on that list.
Thank you, Amy. David Carter, Chair. Other questions, comments, motions? I'd just like to say, I mean, in principle, I'm, I'm fully in support of this. I think from a practical standpoint, given the situation that the community faced last year, there needs to be an increased capacity for, for services to, for shelter to homeless individuals. I, and, and we don't know what, how much worse it's going to be this year. I'm, I am, I really am looking forward to seeing that second half, because I think in order to address the kinds of health and safety concerns around, you know, transmission, it's going to be essential to be able to increase the number of, of locations as well and to keep the overall densities relatively low. So I'm, I, I fully intend to support this tonight, and I'm also really eager to see that second half come, come through in a month or two. Any other Commissioners care to comment or perhaps make a motion? Commissioner Butler? Oh, you're on.
I said, I will defer to Commissioner Willie if she had another comment. I was just going to make a motion. Then I will go. I move that we forward the, that we forward the proposed amendment to Article 5 of the Lawrence Land Development Code revising items related to temporary shelters to the Lawrence City Commission with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Butler. Do we have a second? Commissioner Carpenter, by hand motion. Any further discussion? All right, Jeff, could I ask you to read the roll, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yeah.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Jeff. David Carter, Chair. This brings us to our last item on the agenda tonight. Item number eight, consider approving a comprehensive plan amendment to Plan 2040, Chapter 8B, specific land use plans, the K-10 and Farmers Turnpike Plan. And I do want to, it occurs to me, I want to thank the members of the public who have held out this long. Mary, the floor is yours.
Mary Miller, City County Planner. This comprehensive plan amendment was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners for property in the northwest corner of the intersection of North 1800 and East 1200 Road. The area is in the urban growth area and is located within the boundaries of the K-10 and Farmers Turnpike Plan. And just for a little background on the amendment, a conditional use permit for a mini-storage facility was submitted for one of the parcels in this area, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing at which several members of the public commented that the use would not be in keeping with the character of the area, and was concerned that the amount of impervious surface that would be added would increase the flooding potential. And this application was eventually denied by the County Commission. The property owner then submitted a certificate of survey for residential development. As this did not conform to the future land use recommendation in the area plan, the application was denied and then appealed to the County Commission. They indicated that residential use would be the preferred use and placed the application on hold and initiated a text amendment at their May 6, 2020 meeting to accommodate the residential development. So Figure 2 on Page 3 of the staff report shows the area included within this amendment, and there are four parcels. I've been informed today that there are five parcels, the little parcel with the house sold, so it's under new ownership. Letters are mailed to the four parcels. I did not mail a letter to that one that was sold, as it was under separate ownership when the notification was sent out, but I'll send out a notification again before this goes to the County Commission, and the new owners will get notification as well. Currently, the long-range plan recommends office research as future uses for these properties, and this category does not include residential uses. The staff is recommending a revision to the residential office future use category. This allows residential uses as well as work-live units and office uses. Given the industrial zoning to the east of 1200 Road with the West R or E3G plant, and the future land use recommendation for office research in this location, a transitional use category would be appropriate here. The office research use would be located to the east of East 1200 Road, and the less intense residential office would be located to the west of 1200 Road. That would allow a mix of the residential and office uses and service of transition. The residential office use group would accommodate the proposed residential use that I mentioned, but also allow work-live units as well as various office uses. The transitional, transitional use pattern I mentioned is currently provided in the long-range plan at the intersection of North 1800 and East 1000 Road, as shown in Figure 3 of Page 5 of the staff report. And this would just be similar to what we're recommending at this intersection. And as noted in the staff report, the proposed change meets the criteria for a comprehensive plan amendment. The proposed changes include three things. One is a revision in the area identified for residential office use in Section 3.2.1.5, Page 3-9 of the plan, to include the subject property. Two is a revision in the area identified for office research use in Section 3.2.1.7, on Page 3.9, to remove the subject property, and then a revision in the future land use recommendation map shown following Page 3-11, to show these changes. And as the amendment meets the criteria for approval, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the comprehensive plan amendment to Plan 2040, Chapter 8B, specific land use plans, to revise K-10 and Farmers Turnpike Plan permitting residential uses in the northwest corner of North 1800 and East 1200 Roads, and forwarding the amendment to the Lawrence City Commission and the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. And staff also recommends, if appropriate, that the Commission approve and authorize the Chair to adopt and sign Planning Commission Resolution PCR 20-00218. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We have three members of the public who signed up to speak this evening. Lyric Barts is first. You have three minutes for your comments.
Thank you. I just have a few thoughts that I've jotted down, so please excuse me if I lose my place. Plan 2040 spells out numerous specifics that pertain to the property at North 1800, East 1200. I want to go on record with a few of these points in regards to the proposed cluster development. Goals of the 2040 include, as on Chapter 2, Page 12, 1.2, consider and mitigate development impact on watershed. The more impervious surfaces that we have that we add to this property will increase the speed that the water drains down into the watershed and into the creek. We also, the goal is strengthen floodplain regulations to mitigate flood hazards, and Lakeview area is very prone to flooding as it is, and we've had a lot of problems in the last few years. Another point is inventory and protect groundwater resources and their recharge land. Seventy-plus years of root growth in this pasture land describes recharge lands very accurately. On Page 13 of the 2040, sensitive land protections include, among other things, but sensitive lands are places that have unique environmental attributes worth of retention or special care. They're critical to the maintenance of ecosystems and healthy plant and wildlife populations. Protection of sensitive land reduces vulnerability to natural hazards and enhance quality of life. We have the, as listed in this, the rare plants and animal habitats. They do the bird count out here every year, floodplain and floodway, wetlands and stream corridors. We have a watershed in this area, and I want to point out that our land and the other neighbors down creek should not be at peril to satisfy another landowner's desire to develop theirs. Existing property is as important as future property. The creek bed is eroding at an alarming rate. Increasing the amount of water and how quickly it is flooding through our creek down here is a great concern for ours and the neighbors. We ask the City of Lawrence and Douglas County to please consider the other residents. Some are lifelong residents, some are fourth and fifth generation, and please to consider the lessening of flooding our properties as, and restrict the lots being asked for by the current owner. Reducing the number of homes allowed and the acres that are lost land in cultivation allows the drainage that could make the difference between flooding out the land and homes and people downstream, potential loss of livestock, farm equipment, and even human life. The people of the Lakeview area and the Deerfield Creek Basin have had a lot of problems with flooding, and as has been pointed out to us before, you can't stop development. You can't stop the city from coming out, and we're not trying to. We're just trying to control it to the point where we don't lose our property and the neighbors don't lose theirs. Please, please take into consideration that, like I said, current landowners are also as important as future landowners.
Thank you, Ms. Barts. Appreciate it. Next is Larry Barts.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the time. When I built my house out here, sorry, Larry Barts, when I built my house out here in 93, on a family farm, anybody could go buy five acres and put a house on it, and no, there was no questions asked. could go buy five acres and put a house on it. And no, there was no questions asked. Then the County Commission said, "The county's growing too fast, so let's make it 10 acres." So they voted to make it 10 acres. That's fine. Now it's 20 acres. So you can vote, go anywhere in the county, buy 20 acres, and build a house. It seems to me like the only thing we're doing here is exceptions to all the rules. Everything I heard tonight from the development out on the west side of town is, "Let's make an exception to the rule." And I just don't, I don't understand that. You know, make it one thing, make it easy for people to understand, make it five acres, make it 10 acres. You know, what I want to know is this change, you guys are talking about changing my property also. And, and I would ask the Commissioners, because I don't know, what's that going to do to my property? Am I going to be able to cluster develop it? Should I cluster develop it? Maybe that's what I should do with it. I, I just, I don't know. I, I think that 15.96 acres, they're going to put five houses on it. And I, I just don't, I just don't understand it. There's going to be 12 acres in floodplain that can't be built on, and three acres of the old farmhouse. So the answer to the, what Mary Miller was saying earlier was, there's six houses on it. They're going to build five new ones. The one was existing already. So anyway, there's, there's six acres on, or six houses on 18.89, 18.96 acres. So I, I just don't, I think that's too much of a cluster. Thank you very much. I appreciate you allowing us to, to have our comments. And, and I would appreciate somebody answering my question about what that's going to do to my property.
Thank you, Mr. Barts. Third on the list is Anthony Fennello.
Yes, my name is Anthony Fennello. I am the current landowner and the applicant for this development. As, as you can see, the neighbors, the Barts family, have their concerns about it. And, you know, I, as a landowner, I, you know, I, I can see, I can see their issues with, you know, somebody coming in there and trying to, to build some houses in the development. I would just like to say that from the beginning, I tried to follow the future use of this land and went through city council as a, as an even tie on it, and went to the County Commissioners. The County Commissioners, you know, trying to come to a common resolution, didn't think that it was fit for the land. So we came back, Mary and I worked together on coming up with something that fit the area a little better. And the Commissioners and staff all felt like houses in this area would be a, a nice fit for it. I've followed every single rule with laying out the future, I think it's 40% you have to set aside, which is all floodplain. So there wouldn't, you know, there's no, none of the lots would be in the floodplain, the 100-year. Then, what was I saying? So I just, you know, my, my only concern to yours, you know, I just, as a landowner, I, you know, I'm following the rules that has been set aside. And I think that, you know, as a landowner, I should have some, some kind of say on what goes there, you know, and three acres per house seems suitable for the area. So I can take any questions from anybody. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fennello. Let's see, I guess with that, I guess I should ask, so David Carter, Chair, I should ask Kyle, can you please confirm if anyone is in the chamber to make any public comment?
Kyle Kobe with planning, I can confirm.
There is no one. Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to the Commissioners. Any questions, comments for, for staff or for any of the folks who issued public comment? Commissioner Willey?
A question for clarification for staff. So we're not actually looking at the development itself, or are we? Are we just looking at whether we would consider the comprehensive plan amendment? So I, I've seen the development that came forward from the Board of County Commissioners, just because I was there for it, but is that, that's not included in our packet in the same way it normally would be? Can you talk about, talk about that?
Right. The certificate of survey is not before you today. It actually hasn't been reviewed very thoroughly. It was submitted to planning. We knew we couldn't approve it based on the long-range plan, and so it got an early denial and went to the County Commission. If the plan is amended, then we would go ahead and complete the review. You know, they're proposing five RDPs on 28 acres. Whether they can have that or not depends upon where the floodplain is and whether they meet the standards. So the review of the certificate of survey, that will be ongoing following this, but we just can't move ahead at all without the amendment to the comp plan.
Thank you, Mary. David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Sands?
All right. Rob Sands, planning commissioner. So this, just a point of clarification, the applicant, in this sense, the entity asking for the comp plan amendment is the Board of County Commissioners, correct?
That is correct. They thought residential was a more suitable use for this area than the research office.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Commissioner Sands. Commissioner Willey?
So anything we do with the comprehensive plan amendment also has to go to the City Commission, would that also be right, Mary?
Mary Miller, Planner. Yes, it does have to go to the City and the County Commission.
Commissioner Willey?
Commissioner Willey, again, sorry, follow-up. So the, the request, if it does come through for the five RDPs, is that falling under the old code or would that fall under the new code? Would we have an option to look at a cluster development like we would under the new code, or is this strictly under the old code because it was initiated first?
It would be under the old code. It was submitted before the code was revised. So we would not require the rezoning. We would need to rezonate if the certificate of survey gets approved just to match the density, which is what we're doing with other certificates of survey that were submitted prior to the change of the zoning regulations. We'll have about three in the urban growth area. But once they get approved, we'll have to come back with a rezoning just to catch up.
So Karen Willey, planning commissioner, follow-up. So there would be no public process after this because it falls under the old zoning rules. Is that right?
That's right. It would just have to meet the standards of the subdivision regulations.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Commissioner Willey. Commissioner Carpenter, please.
Jim Carpenter, planning commissioner, are we in tier two or tier three of this property? There's no diagram in this particular report.
I believe it is tier two. I mean, I'm sorry, tier three. I can check on that real fast.
While she, while Mary looks that up, David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to make any observations while Mary's looking that up, or you'd want to wait for her answer?
I don't have anything else yet.
I see. I've got some thoughts, but I'm really interested in hearing from other Commissioners. While we wait, I, I mean, I'll confess, David Carter, Chair, I'll confess a little bit of confusion here, because I think, you know, we're trying to follow an area plan that we have conceded is, is out of date, given the, the changing conditions on the ground. You know, I, I look, and I'll, I'll confess, I voted in favor of the applicant with the, you know, the boat storage facility, although that failed to be accepted by the County Commission. You know, I, I believe in this case in conforming to the plan, and yet the plan itself seems to be under question. And so we're being asked to approve, you know, this very surgical change, but at a time when there are other, almost wholesale conditions that seem to be suggesting that the plan itself should be revisited. And so, you know, my predilection at this point, and I'm out of sympathy for, for this, for the land, the landowner, who's been trying to adapt to the changing conditions and, and I'm also sympathetic to, to the neighbors. I mean, the Bartses have made their, their concerns very clear. But our particular role here tonight, aside from the literal response to the, the change that's being requested here, is frankly a little bit confusing to me, given the status of the Farmer's Turnpike Plan. And that's not a question. But, oh, Mary Miller, uh, Mary, would you please feel free to respond to my observation?
Well, I wanted to say, it is in tier three of the urban growth area, this, this properties we're talking about. And the County Commission, when they initiated this amendment, they also asked that that plan be brought back to them at a study session so they could make changes to the overall plan. But the initiation was just for this one piece. But they did notice that they wanted to update the whole plan.
Thank you, Mary. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to respond to that now?
Jim Carpenter, planning commissioner. Last time this particular area was up, we did split by five, because we were looking at placeholders. We made the comments that we needed to have a larger discussion about how to modify this area plan to bring it into compliance with Plan 2040, just as all the other area plans need. I, I also have a little confusion. I think we have direction that, at least for this portion of the area plan, the County Commission would prefer residential. But I had the concern the last time, and we've had the same concern with other applications that sought to text amendments for single applicants for single parcels of land in an area plan without looking at the area plan as whole. And we've been denying those for some of the reasons that Chair Carter have mentioned this evening. And maybe our hands being forced as to which area plan's coming up first by the County Commission wanting to have a study session. But I'm uneasy about making, as the comment was, surgical changes to the area plan until we are able to discuss the area as whole and the future of that area. And I think, so then I have a question for Mary. Basically, given the observations of the County Commission, what their preference is, and what is currently specified in the area plan for this location, what possible developments could happen prior to amendment of the entire plan?
So if I understand you're right, you're asking, if this amendment went forward, what kind of developments could happen in this area? Or are you asking, under the current plan?
Under the current plan, Jim Carpenter, planning commissioner, under the current plan, if we deny this this evening until we have the further discussion and the work session by the County Commission to weigh in on this area plan, what could happen now under the current code with the current plan?
Well, basically, I believe that little house and, and Mr. Fennello might, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the three acres of the house was divided off through a homestead exemption survey, which means the rest of the property is not developable. So it would have to be divided for some sort of development. The current regulations recommend office research, and so warehouse, those kind of low-impact uses that don't have a lot of infrastructure needs, and would be the ones that would be seen as the most appropriate from a use category. You know, it doesn't involve a lot of people. You don't need a lot of restrooms and septic systems. The infrastructure could handle it. And usually those are placeholder uses that are easily converted to something else. The research facility could go through. There are several other kinds of uses, but in order for those to go through, the property would need to be platted or divided through a certificate of survey and create rural development parcels. So the division would be the same, they would have to divide it. So you're not limited to residential development when you do a certificate of survey. This one would be, because it went through before the regulations changed. But they would need to divide the land. And if they were moving to something else, I assume it may be necessary to rezonate. But the, it would not be possible to develop it residentially. It would have to be developed with some use that's permitted in the plan today. And I don't know, veterinary office might be a permitted use, you know, looking in the research office, I think that might be one of the uses that would be allowed and would be considered appropriate for the district, you know.
Jim Carpenter, planning commissioner. Yeah, we just had the County Commission say that they aren't keen on that current use of this area. They prefer residential. So if there was a proposal for retail office, I, I think the handwriting is on the wall where the County Commission is on that already.
I think so. Unless it was a very low-impact, very low-impervious-surface-use, you know, something that was very compatible, like a veterinary office, that might be something that we consider appropriate.
David Carter, Chair, Commissioner Willey?
Karen Willey, planning commissioner. So the project started off with two houses that suited the neighborhood and did not suit the plan, went to the mini-storage, which suited the plan but didn't suit the neighborhood, and now we've gone to five houses, which is, doesn't suit probably the neighbors or the plan, but possibly it does the County Commission. So it, this is, this one's, this one is so tricky. And boy, when I saw that it was coming back to us, I wasn't happy about it, because it, it shows kind of a breakdown in communication between what we were, what we thought we were doing with the Planning Commission and what they were doing at the County Commission. I think the, the best way forward, except that we've put this landowner and this neighborhood through so much time already, would be for us to have that bigger discussion about what do we want for this area. And I've reached out a couple of times to representatives from the Chamber of Commerce to say, "Is this, is this still land that's wanted for office commercial? Is this, is this something that's part of our bigger picture? What's an opinion there?" And haven't really gotten one. So boy, none of this discussion has happened yet. I, I could really go either way. I would feel better about a much lower density use there than, than trying to, to put five residential lots, even if we did it under the new code where we had a way to, you know, preserve, you know, and, and have some protections over more of that floodplain, because I think the flooding is a, is a real concern for the neighbors. So something that would, would stay in a residential if that's the desire of the County Commission, but would also protect some of that flooding from, from having so much development as, as was being proposed. But we're not really looking at that proposal either. So I, I've just turned this in my head so many different ways.
Thank you, Commissioner Willey. David Carter, Chair. Other, other Commissioners care to weigh in? I don't mind a little awkward silence. I can give you guys some time. I, I think Commissioner Willey and Commissioner Carpenter have done a fine job of summarizing where we stand right now. I, I'm inclined to support this reluctantly, only to see some action, but I'm reluctant to change facts on the ground while the plan itself, itself is still in flux. I guess I'd have a, a question for, for, for staff, for Mary or for Jeff. You know, what are the anticipated next steps? And I know, and I, out of sensitivity to the resource limitations of, of staff, and we've talked about, you know, the, the higher, or not the hierarchy, the backlog of area plans that need to be reviewed and updated. And it's been, it's been really difficult over the past six months, you know, with the, or the last four months with, with the staffing, you know, the, the impact of, of COVID. you know, with the, or the last four months with the staffing, the impact of COVID on just getting staff in the same place at the same time. But I would be interested in understanding more about what's the prospect for updating the, this area plan, so that we can actually get some more concrete direction.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. I will start this off, and Amy, I'm sure will have a thought to add to this one here. This was part of our work plan that we showed to you, I believe, in December and January to kind of initiate some of these opening plan discussions here. I don't think it'd surprise anybody to say that we've had a bit of a change in course due to COVID and some of the actions going on here. It is a high item on our work plan. And I would just share the kind of note you is that I don't necessarily think a small change at this scale necessarily runs afoul of a larger overall picture. I think that can be accommodated and accounted for in a larger review of the entire plan. It may have some contextual changes that go on around it that we're not aware of. That is absolutely a possibility. But I don't want to say that it's, a small adjustment isn't also appropriate in certain instances. And I, you know, my, if I had my crystal ball and my hunch to it, I'm not sure this plan and the other ones that are high on that list gets started in 2020. It might be mid to middle 2021 at best, depending upon how everything unfolds, that we even begin the process. And even then, I think the process would take some time to kind of go through fruition and have the, really have the meaningful public input that a plan of this nature deserves.
Thank you, Jeff. Amy, I think you've got to follow.
Amy Miller, Assistant Planning and Development Services Director. If you remember, we tried to start the annual work plan this year, but because of COVID, it got a little derailed. So we are still planning on bringing back to you an annual work plan close to the end of the year, the beginning of 2021. And that will outline what we're working on next. So you will have a chance at that point to prioritize, help us prioritize the vast workload that we have. And then we do plan on taking that to the city commission and then the county commission for input as well.
Thank you, Amy. David Carter, Chair. Other questions, observations from other commissioners? I mean, out of sensitivity to all parties. Yes, Commissioner Struckoff.
Planning Commissioner Eric Struckoff. I am inclined to support this as, as Director Crick mentioned, as perhaps a step toward what we think, where we think we're going with a possible future area plan as well. Does, the question is, does that, would approval of this application fit what we think that future area plan will do? Will those, are we working towards a convergence of those two plans and a harmony in our, between our area and comprehensive plans? If so, and if we can foresee that happening in that way, we have direction from the county commission already, then I would be more inclined to support this. If the consensus of the planning commission is one that the gap or the inconsistencies between the two are too great right now, or that that might not be, that might be a premature step, I would, I mean, I can understand that. But I am inclined to support this if we can find a kind of a harmonious direction with our area plan and our comprehensive plan. As I recall, the applicant, the applicant's initial wish was to have residential on this. And so we're kind of circled back to what might have been a good first step then. It's hard to say, but we, we do want to proceed with harmony between our two plans. And the question is whether we feel it appropriate to, to proceed with that, with that question and say in advance, this is the direction we're going, this is where we think our city and county commissions will want to go also. And that's kind of the question. But it is, it is a little bit, you know, our role here is, we are charged with considering the future. We are charged with understanding and predicting and, and planning based on what we think could possibly occur. When we have an application before us, we have, whether it's rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment, we are charged with considering all the possibilities that could come along with our actions. And so here, I think we have, we have some direction, and we do have a bit of a vision toward harmonious kind of union between our comprehensive and area plans. The question is whether we start down that path with this application or wait for a further discussion of the area plan. But I am inclined to support this application.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. David Carter, Chair. Other, other feedback? And I would make the observation that, linking back to when we, we were looking at this area, this, we were looking at the application last year. I think I made the observation that, you know, this is going, something is going to go here at some point. And so the concerns about impervious ground and the effect on flooding are very valid. And I, you know, again, I'm really sensitive to, to the Bartzes and, you know, other neighbors who have concerns around this. If we look at this particular application, though, this particular use, I think it's less intensive than what's currently allowed by the plan or anticipated by the plan. And so this is effectively, I don't know if you'd call it a downzoning, but I think it's, it should be more sensitive to, to neighbors downstream. So I think that's one other reason for me to be more inclined to support it. And I would be happy to entertain dissent from, you know, Commissioner Willie or Commissioner Ashworth, who might contest that observation. But I think I'm inclined to support this as is. It's 10:02. Commissioner Ashworth, please.
Commissioner Ashworth. I'm really torn by this one. I was one of the negative votes last time around because I didn't feel it fit the area. So on one hand, I'm very reluctant to support, given our, our recent history of denying applications when we have this, a change in an area plan and a change in a comprehensive plan until we revisit. But on the other hand, this is what you might consider a downzoning. It is now set for research office, and putting residential there is a less intensive use. So because of that, I might be inclined to support, given that we, we really don't know when we're going to revisit this area plan and this comprehensive plan at this point. And I'm not sure we would see this area reformat, rezoned for agriculture, given that review.
Thank you, Commissioner Ashworth. David Carter, Chair. Other observations? Or is someone inclined to make a motion?
I'll make another observation. So looking at the other kind of nodes of that intersection, commercial to the south and industrial, I think, is that the purple to the southeast? And they were putting low-density residential to the northwest. We usually look at transitions and matching nodes and things like that. I could entirely see if this is not especially needed or wanted for commercial office, office space in the future, you know, as we revisit the area plan, deciding that that isn't what's needed here. But boy, this, pulling it out and putting low-density residential close to town without the protections that we have in our new code about making room for future, future streets and improvements and things like that, this seems like a backward step to me. I would take a little bit more convincing. I'm also concerned about that if we make this change now, that what happens next has no public process for the neighbors who have been very faithful to turn out and express their concerns about what happens here. So I am not greatly in favor of the change at the moment. So I'm open to being convinced by other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. David Carter, Chair. Who would like to do some convincing? Commissioner Sinclair?
Luke Sinclair, Planning Commissioner. I am not going to try to convince Commissioner Willie. Even if I tried, I don't think I'd be successful. But I don't have much to add. I just wanted to at least say something. And I think I'm on the fence, and I think really it's only because of what, what the property owner has been through that, you know, I think Commissioner Willie already kind of articulated. But I, I don't like, I guess, or I don't feel comfortable with the, with the process, the way it's come in front of us. And I don't like really kind of diving into one small portion of it when there's sort of this idea that eventually we will get to addressing the, the rest of the sector plan. I have concerns that, you know, I guess there's, there's the possibility that once, you know, sort of robust discussions and conversations are had about this sector plan, that maybe this particular rezoning or this use would not be a part of that discussion, yet it would be in place and it would kind of be foreclosed in terms of being able to address it. So I, I'm on the fence a little bit because of how this is all in front of us, but I'm, I guess I'm leaning towards voting no, in favor of trying to address that area more holistically.
Thank you, Commissioner Sinclair. David Carter, Chair. Any other voices on this? Commissioner Carpenter?
Jim Carpenter, Planning Commissioner. I agree, this is a process question, and it's a matter of consistency with the process we've insisted on following up to this point. I do have sympathy for the landowner. They first came forward with something that wasn't appropriate for the area. They've been trying to find something else. I also share all the reservations that Commissioner Willie has brought up about if this is approved tonight, the public's out of it. It all, it all becomes administrated with possible appeals to the county commission. For consistency's sake with the process we've been arguing for, I'm going to vote no until we have a chance to get further input about the entire plan. We have better information about possible expansion of the industrial from the east. There's just too many questions to just carve out this little exception. I know that may have been what happened in the past, but not with the commissions that have been around for, well, at least four years. We've been looking at longer-range plans and not just doing things haphazardly. So I would hate to see us do this. Just one little exception leads to one more little exception, leads to one more little exception, and then what do we got? So, and as other commissioners have said in the past, houses are the final problem. Once the house is there, it's going to be hard to get rid of it if, if that's not what's deemed appropriate for the area. And our conversation the last time about this was, what is an appropriate placeholder? Cultural, or would it be a couple of houses? And that's where we had a split decision. And that's what went on to the plan, to the county commission, was that failure to recommend because we were split on what the proper placeholder was before we revisited the entire plan. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting no tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. David Carter, Chair. Guess I would make the observation, no one's going anywhere tonight until we have a motion that either succeeds or fails. So, but I, but I do want to sort of piggyback on your observation. And I think, you know, I was talking, I was joking about someone convincing Commissioner Willie. But I think I'm feeling rather convinced myself based on that perspective. My, my initial observation was about, you know, confusion. And I think my confusion is being resolved in, in, in opposition to this, to this change. I think back to the, to what I said last year when this came up. I always said I wanted to, I, you know, had respect for the neighbors, but I wanted to follow the plan. And looking at this so much in flux, I, from a process standpoint, it's hard for me to support a change that would have such a permanent effect, such a long-term effect. And, you know, you know, with, with respect for Jeff's observation about, you know, one change here wouldn't necessarily have a broader impact. Now, this is a fairly, this is a considerable intersection here. You know, to the south, this turns into Castled. And one can imagine in the future, access to Farmer's Turnpike from Lawrence to the south, this could be, you know, a node of some importance. So I think it ought to be, it ought to come up to some public discourse, what the vision is for this area, before we stick something there that is going to determine what goes, what, you know, what happens to the neighboring corners. So reluctantly, I was thinking I was reluctantly in favor. I'm actually, I'm going to oppose this tonight and fully support putting this area plan at the top, you know, as far up the work plan as possible for the coming year, to give the landowners some resolution and to give the neighbors some peace for what to expect in the future. So that's my point of view. Commissioner Sands?
I would only say that last, maybe it was last meeting, or maybe it was last month, Amy Miller cautioned us against hanging our hat on the speed in which staff has an opportunity to assess nodal plans. I think this must have been last month. And so I'm fairly certain those conditions still exist. So I don't think by waiting for staff to give us an estimation on the sector plan for this area, that we're going to give the property owner or the neighbors any kind of resolution within this year or the next year. So I'm, while I hear everybody's reservations with the process of it, and I agree, also our process can, the unpredictability of allowing applicants, even if it's the county commission or the city commission, to steer the comprehensive plan is, can be as unpredictable as just the workload of the staff to be able to produce something and plan. Over.
Thank you, Commissioner Sands.
I also have changed my mind through our discussion of the process. And as I mentioned earlier, we are charged with thinking about the possibilities that follow our decision. And I think Commissioner Willie's brought that home with her comment. And so I am tipped back to the other side of the fence and will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner Struckoff. Commissioner Butler?
I will make a motion. I think we're ready for that, if that is okay.
Please.
I move that we deny approval of this comprehensive plan amendment to plan amendment. I move that we deny approval of this comprehensive plan amendment to Plan 2040, Chapter 8B, specific land use plans, K-10 and Farmer's Turnpike Plan to permit residential uses in the northwest corner of North 1800 at East 1200 roads, enforcing the amendment. Well, I guess we wouldn't board it if we're denying it. Or does it still go to the Lawrence City Commission and the Board of County Commissioners with the recommendation of denial?
I'll defer to Jeff. I don't think it moves forward, but Jeff could probably give us more information on that.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services Director. Typically, for an amendment to proceed, it would require an affirmative vote from all three bodies. We would share the action tonight with the county commission and see if they would like to take that up or see how they would like to proceed in that respect. And so, yeah, it does require all three bodies to vote affirmative for an amendment to approve.
Then my motion is just to deny, correct?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Butler. David Carter, Chair. Is there a second? Commissioner Carpenter? Okay, by hand motion. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Commissioner Willie.
Karen Willie, Planning Commissioner. Mary, Mr. Bartz had asked a question about what are the possibilities on his land? Is that something that the two of you could connect and have that discussion so that he gets some answers for what his possibilities are?
Forgive me, by the two of you, is that directed at Mary or?
So, Mary, would you be willing to meet with Mr. Bartz if Mr. Bartz is interested in that to look at what options are available currently?
Mary Miller, city-county planner. Yeah, his options would be the same as the landlord property. And he could certainly give me a call or email, and we could discuss those.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you, Commissioner Willie, for bringing that up. Any further discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, Jeff, could I ask you to please read the rule?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Certainly, Commissioner Ashworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
No.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes.
Commissioner Sands?
No.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Jeff, can I, Jeff, can I change my vote? I meant, I said no, but I meant yes.
You meant yes to deny and not.
Yes to deny, sorry. Yes to deny, yes.
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. I will get that noted real quick. Give me one moment. Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you. And again, thanks to everyone who's participated in this. David Carter, Chair. This is painful. And I really appreciate the discourse that's led to this. And this continues. So thank you to members of the public who have participated. With that, that takes, that's the end of our regular agenda. We go to miscellaneous new or old business. May I ask, Jeff, is there any, and commissioners, any new or old business to bring up at this point?
Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. No new business to bring up from staff.
Okay, any commissioners have anything they're aware of they need to bring up? That brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? From Commissioner Struckoff, and I have a second. From Commissioner Ashworth. May I read, Jeff, could I ask you to read the rule, please?
Certainly. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services. Commissioner Ashworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
You're unmuted.
Yes, with happy birthday to Commissioner Willie.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Commissioner Payton?
Yes, and happy birthday to Commissioner Willie also. And I think that earlier, when I was unmuted, it was Hazel was eager to sing happy birthday as well.
You're God.
Sorry about that.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Sinclair?
Yes.
Commissioner Struckoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes, and thank you, everybody.
Motion passes nine to zero.
All right. Thanks, all. David Carter, Chair. We are adjourned until next month. Have a good night.
There it went. We off, Kurt?